Duty to work alongside our administrators, faculty and staff to implement measures that will help our students and staff heal and move forward. Together, let us commit to providing the resources and support needed to help our community heal and grow stronger. I ask at this time, we take a moment of silence to honor and remember the lives of these two precious students. May their memory guide us in our efforts to create a compassionate and nurturing environment for all those who step foot in our schools. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to item number four, recognitions, and that'll be the September 2023 campus recognitions, as well as item B, September 2023 community partner recognitions. Ms. Rodriguez?
Eirabali, superintendent Sayavedra and board members, can I invite you to the front of the dais, please? Good evening. The first recognition this evening is for our very own Civil Health Magnet High School. This year celebrates 30 years of providing health-focused education to many El Paso ISD students. The campus is named after lifelong El Pasoan Maxine Silva, who once represented the area in which the school is located on the El Paso ISD School Board of Trustees. Since its establishment in 1993, Silva Health Magnet High School has been a pillar of excellence in education, providing students with a nurturing and challenging learning environment. We commend the school on this remarkable milestone and acknowledge the dedication and commitment of all staff, students, and community who have contributed to its success. Let us welcome Principal Edgar Rincon and Silver Magnet, Silver Magnet Coordinator William Vega with a round of applause. Thank you. Next, we will recognize a supportive community partner, the KFC Foundation. The foundation last month awarded Mesita Elementary School and Mesita Early Childhood Development Center, PTA, a $10,000 grant as part of the Kentucky Fried Wishes Program. The KFC Foundation's Kentucky Fried Wishes Program supports communities by funding community development projects on the wish list of nonprofit organizations. Since 2021, the KFC Foundation program has invested over 1.6 million to support over 160 local nonprofit organizations. Here to receive this recognition from us are the KFC representatives, Lilia Flores, Rosa Lopez, Alma Guerra, and Maricela Dominguez. Thank you. Oh, can you join us in the front? I'm sorry. You can go this way, yeah? That's fine, you can go. And we have some ladies, PTA members, can I have your name to recognize you? Great, thank you for being here and congratulations. Thank you again. Thank you, this concludes this month's recognitions.
So this will take us to item number five, our public forum. Ms. Hernandez. At this time, if you can pull your attention to the screen, they're gonna share some rules regarding public forum, thank you.
The district is a local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in our district, and board meetings must be focused on meeting this charge. In meeting that charge, the district board meetings are public meetings under the Texas Open Meetings Act to conduct the business of the district. They are not, however, meetings of the public. Therefore, all persons in attendance are expected to display stability and decorum that is respect for other persons without the use of insulting, profane, threatening, or abusive language. Public comment will not be used for personal attacks. In addition, you are directed to the district's complaint procedures and board policy regarding employee, student, parent, or public complaints. The deputy superintendent of administration is in attendance if you wish to discuss a matter with him. Please note that during public forum, specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. However, the board may not deliberate or decide any subject that is not posted on its agenda.
Thank you, we have five speakers for open forum speakers. Sherry Ritter.
Good afternoon, Board President Eirabali, board members, Ms. Sayavedra. My name is Sherry Rider, I'm a speech-language pathologist at Murfree Pre-K 8. I am here to bring forth a few issues that are seriously bothering me. Number one, the SLPs are still working without a contract and without notice of salary. Why? Number two, I see on the agenda that Stepping Stones Group is on the agenda yet again, even after you voted no on it by a 4-3 margin at last month's board meeting. Why? Number three, we have hired two new SLPs, two, that's it, despite the fact that you were told four and five in the wings, which wasn't true. Another story. Number four, my very dear SLP friend is moving back to El Paso and was told yesterday by HR that she would making, she would be making less than what she was making when she worked for EPISD. How is that even possible? Again, why? Number five, the Special Education Department has decided that we don't have enough to do and need to add more work to our plates by having us do additional documentation on progress reports for children that we are already documenting for. I fail to see the purpose of this ridiculous project, but it seems to me that someone doesn't have anything better to do. We are being worked to death. Number six, I was sent an email on August 10th for an interview for the facilitator's position with less than 24 hours' notice, I could not attend. Lo and behold, I have never been given an opportunity to interview despite calling to ask. Was this a ploy by HR just to shut me up? I think so. However, I am being asked to perform the duties of the facilitator in addition to the amounts of work that I already have. I don't mind doing it, but it would be nice if I had the title. Lastly, number seven, I love my job, I love my school, and I love the children that I work with, all 90-plus of them. I love helping my colleagues. However, we are being bamboozled and hoodwinked by the HR department, and that makes this school district unattractive. No one wants to come work for EPISD, so I ask, what is the reason for this behavior? Why is HR trying so hard to discredit the very employees that they hired? I am very concerned about this, and Ms. Sayavedra, you should be too. So my final question to you tonight is, what are you gonna do about it? Thank you.
Thank you. I stand corrected, there's a total of 10 public speakers. Jesús Ariel Hernández. Jesús Ariel Hernández. Next speaker, Cameron Sierra.
Good evening, Board President Eirabali, board members, and Ms. Sayavedra. My name is Cameron Sierra, and I'm a proud speech-language pathologist in EPISD. Why do we need and deserve a 107? Because HR and sped leadership still do not seem to understand. They want to say that we get paid more than the other districts, which is not true, and the other district's SLPs don't do what we do in EPISD. That's why they don't come here. There are 40 SLPs and 40 Diags to cover 49 schools in SISD versus 68 Diags and 42 SLPs to cover 76 campuses in EPISD, while we have more responsibilities than all of the other SLPs in the other districts. SISD has a ratio of one SLP to 45 kids, and they specify ASHA recommended one to 40. Our HIR is trying to say that we get paid more than the other districts, so we should stop fighting. I am at 112 as of today. There are more coming next week, which is 2.5 above our sister district's ratio, and does my pay reflect that, let alone of the extra job responsibilities that SLPs in the district have on top of therapy and everything else? Our job descriptions do not include everything that we do. In fact, we do every single thing that is on the job description of a diagnostician in addition to our jobs. But the number one priority in our job description is Medicaid Shar's billing. Let me paint that picture. 112 students on my caseload, 31 speech-only students with a large majority that are seen twice a week, all of which require detailed documented billing to be entered within seven calendar days as per TEA, and it being my number one job responsibility in my job description, even though therapy should be the number one job priority, not the billing of it. Reputation speak volumes, and ours speaks loudly, so people know what they would be getting signing up for us if they were to come. That's why we didn't get a single UTEP student from the cohort of 30, to include the ones that did their internships in EPISD. Why? Because they all talk and compare. If interested, SLPs knew what they were gonna be getting paid while knowing what they were signing up for, maybe we would get more in. Because we know right now that year after year, the plates only become more and more full, SLPs keep leaving, and highly suspicious Band-Aid contracts aren't going to keep your current SLPs here with what is coming next. The consequences of not moving us to a 107 is that we won't entice others to come over permanently. Continued Band-Aid contracts, and you will continue to lose more SLPs who know their worth, even though HR will try to convince you otherwise. Please do what is right, what is desperately needed, and move us to the 107 with the pay that goes with our years of experience at the 107. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Samesaga.
Board members, Board President Eirabali, and Ms. Sayavedra, I am Patricia Amesaga, and I am a teacher, a coach, and a proud EPTA member. I'm here to speak to you today about the very important and the very underpaid athletic trainers, but I will say that three minutes will not even begin to scratch the surface of what needs to be said. The athletic trainers in EPISD receive a $6,250 stipend, while our neighboring districts pay a $20,000 stipend, and Zakoro also adds an additional 15 days. As a coach and a parent of three former EPISD athletes, I know the value of what they do on a day-to-day basis. Let me share with you their typical work week. During the fall semester, they work two full eight-hour days. They cover athletic practices and treatments for all athletes, including dance and cheer. Then on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, they can work anywhere from 10 to 12 or more hours covering sports events, plus at least four hours on Saturdays for a minimum total of 56 hours a week. You could say that they get to watch and enjoy the games, but many times, they are watching each play carefully, looking for an accident or injury that they may need to attend to. They spend timeouts, looking for any sign of concussions or any injuries that were not evident during play. Once basketball season starts, those 12-hour days increase, since the only day that there are no games are Mondays. But now, games are also played on Saturdays. There are also more sports going on simultaneously in the spring semester. Basketball, tennis, soccer, baseball, softball, track, and wrestling all take place second semester. Soccer and basketball have home games on the same nights, and the trainers are back and forth between two gyms and the football field. Even if both trainers are on duty during the night, there is a lot to cover, but they find a way to do it. Some of our high schools have over 900 athletes that they must care for. Plus, they also help cover middle school games played at the high schools and injuries incurred by middle school athletes. The Burgess trainers go above and beyond caring for our athletes at Hartley. They arrive early or stay late in order to evaluate them. He's even come to my school during his lunchtime since He's even come to my school during his lunchtime since no other time was available. During COVID, coaches and athletic trainers were some of the very few employees in the schools, risking their health for our student athletes. Teachers with a master's degree receive a $1,000 stipend. Nationally-board certified teachers receive a $5,000 stipend. EPISD has half of their trainers are nationally-board certified, and most have a master's degree, but yet receive no compensation for that. I've run out of time like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross Moore.
Board President Iravalli, board members, Ms. Sayavedra. My name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. First of all, I want to advertise and encourage you all to show up. Avoid that rolling quorum thing at the Northeast Community Literacy Festival, which will be at McGough and Middle School this coming Saturday. Ms. Hernandez, look forward to seeing you there. Mr. Iravalli, as it uncovers the Northeast, I hope you're in one of the reading booths at a minimum. Ms. Sayavedra, if you would read for kids too, I'd really appreciate it. Our National Exec VP, De Jesus, will be there. And just so you know, the trucks with the special purchase and the trucks with the first book allotment are both somewhere between the East Coast and here on the way. Second thing, giving credit where credit's due. One of the promises Ms. Sayavedra made was lower the student load at secondary to between 150 and 180 between teachers. I just ran a survey of my membership, and with one or two outliers that are getting fixed, she's kept her promise. Thank you. That total student load is what you really have to judge what a teacher has to do. There are a few outliers where a teacher reported, and it's a leveling issue. They got a couple of classes with 42, a couple of classes with 22, same subject. That's a simple problem, and at elementary, we got... The average was 20, but there were reports of 23, 24, and 25, and the teachers, I've been getting this for a while, are told they have a waiver. We run the waiver report that TEA publishes once a week. There are no EPISD waivers approved, in progress, or submitted to TEA as of 9:00 this morning. Second piece, lesson plans have been a point of contention, and if you've been around a while, advocacy on our part. This is a 64-page slideshow that a middle school has to cover a week. That comes nowhere close to meeting the requirements of 11164-A6. This is, and I'm going somewhere with this, an Amplify lesson plan out of the curriculum. It's 17 pages long. This is a thing TEA or Amplify put together for teachers to use. It works in 14-minute time hacks, 20 minutes, even a 1-minute time hack on here. So it's very precise, which kind of brings me to my point. 11164, the Paperwork Reduction Act, has been amended, as I've shared in an email.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
We don't need to be doing these massive plans. The state says this can be used, and the superintendent has the authority to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Do everybody a favor, please.
Norma de la Rosa.
I don't know how I'm going to try to look at you and read this at the same time, but I'll try. Good afternoon, Mr. Iravalli, members of the board, Ms. Sayavedra. I am Norma de la Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. I'm going to briefly address two concerns: teacher class loads and our athletic trainers. As you are aware, pretty much since this school year began, displacement of teachers began and continues to take place. We're not talking one or two, we're talking four, six, eight, 17 teachers who have had their sections closed, most at the secondary level. But that is not to say that elementary grades have not felt the impact. The cause: low enrollment numbers, even though some are coming now since it is after Labor Day. The effect: displaced teachers who have no other campus to go to for the most part are assigned to their campus as a staff teacher. The second effect: class loads have skyrocketed because students need to go somewhere. So class loads are ranging from 35, which is what teachers are being told the district wants the ratio of 1 to 35 at the secondary, to 40 students at above. Some teachers are sitting with class loads of 40-plus. Some programs no longer exist on some campuses or have been combined. And the final effect: I'll wait and see if what I think will take place actually does. The final concern I have is our athletic trainers. They are such hard-working individuals, highly qualified to do the job, yet... the job they do, yet receive no acknowledgement or recognition for their work. I was at that game Friday night, and I saw the trainers from Bowie in Isleta work furiously to save that young man. Yet they received no thanks, no acknowledgement of what they did. I'm not setting aside what EMS personnel did, but they were not the first ones on the scene. Our trainers were. And to be totally disregarded by some central office staff yesterday and not even acknowledged in your social media is disrespectful and inconsiderate. As for EPTA, a big thank you to not only the two trainers from Bowie, but to all of them for their unselfish time, effort, and energy they give to our athletes. We want you to know that you are truly appreciated, even if it's not from the right people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jaime Bailey. Jaime Bailey. Jamie.
My name is Jamie Bailey, and I'm one of the chairs for the El Paso Harm Reduction Alliance. Part of my role is chairs providing overdose prevention and Narcan administration training to community members and organizations. I've trained all of Region 19's school nurses who I know have Narcan in each of the campuses, but that is not enough. El Paso Health Department, El Paso Psychiatric Center, the Opportunity Center, Oliviana, and numerous community trainings among others. I'm asking for your support for EPISD police officers to be supplied the lifesaving medication Narcan. During an overdose prevention training that I provided to EPISD police officers recently, they expressed concern over not being provided Narcan, even amidst overdoses in the schools and fatal overdoses occurring within the student population. Every minute counts when someone has stopped breathing, which is what happens when a student overdoses. It only takes four minutes for brain death to occur, and the EMS national response time is seven minutes. At their request and with their permission, we are here to express our concern and to ask that the board ensure that Narcan is provided to their police officers. I've assigned letter of support from individuals and organizations, which I would like to submit for the record. It states, "Dear school board members, I'm writing to express my enthusiastic support of the El Paso Independent School Board providing the lifesaving medication Narcan to its El Paso ISD Police Department officers." Narcan is a lifesaving medication used to reverse an overdose caused by opioids. Based on data provided by El Paso's Medical Examiner, on January 26, 2022, in 2021, 107,000 people died from opioid overdose in the United States. 97 of those deaths occurred in El Paso. These deaths do not include those that often go unreported or which were pending verification. We know that overdose deaths occur in youth and adolescents, including EPISD students, and that overdoses are occurring within the schools. Therefore, it is of vital importance that the EPISD police officers have Narcan in order to respond to overdoses and save lives. We know that Narcan helps to prevent fatal overdoses and save lives. The results from this endeavor will contribute a great deal towards helping to save and protect students' lives. I look forward to El Paso ISD school board members supporting this worthwhile endeavor and helping improve the health and well-being of EPISD students. Signed, Westside Community Church, Punto de Partida, Project Vida Recovery People, Oliviana, County Commissioner David Stout, EP Cares, and Trinity Homeward Bound. On September 6, Governor Abbott announced a second allotment of 60,000 units of naloxone that will be distributed to all Texas police departments as part of their statewide "One Pill Kill" campaign. Law enforcement personnel, including municipal police, independent school district police, and police departments at higher education institutions are eligible to receive a portion of this allotment based on county population and size. It is my sincere hope that EPISD will receive some of this allotment and provide it to their police officers. I would like to extend an offer to train your teachers, faculty, and staff and students on Narcan administration and overdose prevention.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you.
Tyler Kai.
I am a person in recovery. I am also a recovery support peer specialist at Punto de Partida and a mother of two young men, 18 and 12. It is heartbreaking to see how fentanyl has overtook our city and the people in it, young and old. Let's be actual about the facts that are before us. We need Narcan in the schools. The reason I state this fact is my oldest son's friends are coming to me, asking me for Narcan, because they said, and I quote, "We are tired of seeing our friends and classmates ODing at parties." We attend. It is not a matter of if, it is a matter of when we start having overdoses in the school bathrooms, the cafeteria, locker rooms, and classrooms. Are we prepared for what is to come? Or is it going to take one of the star athletes at Franklin, Coronado, or Montwood to fall victim to this vicious drug for us to take action? We may not be able to beat this vicious wave sweeping over across our nation, but we can surely be prepared.
Thank you. Nellie Morales.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I am going to speak on behalf of Nellie Morales. She is unable to speak at this time because her son... My name is Annie Cabral. I apologize. Her son died of an overdose, fentanyl overdose. Her friends did not have access to the Narcan in order to save his life. I am here asking, just such as you said, Mr. Iravalli, that you are here to provide safety, support, and to be heard. That is what we're here for today. We want to be supported, we want to be heard, and we want your students to be safe. I myself was a former first responder with the El Paso Fire Department. I was a medic, and I am now a recovering addict. I am now a recovery coach over with Punto de Partida. So I am here asking for you all to please take into account how Narcan can save lives. One pill can kill. I myself watched my best friend's son die of a fentanyl overdose. So I'm here to beg you guys to please consider having the Narcan available to your students and to your staff so that we can avoid another student dying of a fentanyl overdose. So that's what we are here for today. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Chris Bailey.
Chair Iravalli and trustees, I'm grateful for your time today and for hearing us out. I'm here to strike a conciliatory tone around this issue, but I cannot stress the impact and the import of having Narcan, not just with your officers, but it should be in every classroom, to be frank. Overdoses do hit children. They hit minors, and they hit them every day. They hit them at schools, they hit them at home. Part of really learning how to reverse an overdose is engaging in harm reduction. There's a lot of prevention work inside of the schools right now, but it is coming to terms with the fact that there has been historically, and there is right now, a drug problem in the schools. Engaging in prevention is not enough. We have to engage in harm reduction. And part of that harm reduction is not just utilizing the safe medication of Narcan and training staff and students on how to use it and where to obtain it when they're on campus, but ensuring that they have access to it when they go home and that their parents know how to use it as well. I implore you to please, please consider this as a viable option for our school district in keeping our children safe. I can tell you that anecdotally, in the work that I do, I am a project coordinator with Project Vida. We have five health clinics all over the region, two in rural parts of Texas, as well as the convener for the recovery-oriented systems of care, a coalition of stakeholders, providers, and people in recovery that work every day at trying to prevent and help treat addiction, but also to prevent overdose. The issue by and large for us is that we are seeing overdoses getting younger and younger, and the problem in El Paso is getting worse and worse. Since the opioid epidemic started as early as 2016, we have lost more people nationally to opioid overdose than we have lost in both sides of the Vietnam War. That's a 10-year conflict. To put that into perspective, that is a person dying every few minutes. And one out of five of those deaths is a child under 18. It is imperative that the Board of Trustees and the administration of EPISD do something today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Last speaker, Christine Zimmerly.
Hello, my name is Christine Zimmerly, and I came here today in support of El Paso Independent School Board providing the lifesaving medication Narcan to its EPISD police department officers, teachers, students, staff, faculty, and parents. Narcan is a lifesaving medication used to reverse an overdose caused by opioids, and I am an EPISD mother. My son is 13. He is... My son is in middle school in EPISD, and I would hate for him to choose to use a substance and not have the medication there to save his life. My son's friends, they're good kids, and my son, he's a good kid too. Addiction and substance use does not discriminate. It doesn't matter what the child is doing, how their grades are. It doesn't matter what their home life is like. Narcan can save the lives of our kids. And I believe that our children, our students, our teachers, the faculty, the staff, and the EPISD officers should all be trained to use it and should have access to it in the classroom. It should be in every first aid kit. And this is because I've seen so many people overdose and die. And I don't want my child to be one of them, and I don't want other kids in our community to die from this epidemic. Please consider, I am a certified trainer. I am also willing to extend this training invitation to EPISD and its staff and parents and children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. This will take us to our consent agenda, item number six, and for that, I have five speakers. So the first one is 6F, and that's Ms. Norma de la Rosa. So the first one is six F, and that's Ms. Norma De La Rosa. Six F, it's the approval and ratification of facilities use agreement between UTEP and EPISD for high school football games, September seventh and September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Good afternoon, Mr. Robali, members of the board, Ms. Ayvedra. I am Norma De La Rosa, president of El Paso Teachers Association. In looking at this item, I noticed that you're being asked to approve a facility agreement with UTEP for use of the Sun Bowl for two football games, Franklin, Coronado, and Bowie Jefferson, for a cost of ninety-nine thousand. I think it is a great opportunity for our student athletes to play in the Sun Bowl at some point of their athletic career, whether while an athlete in EPISD or at UTEP, but one glaring detail stands out. Why is administration presenting a financial expenditure for board approval after the fact? Well, not quite all after the fact. The Franklin Coronado game was played on September seventh, that was last Thursday. The Bowie Jefferson game remains to be played on Saturday. This board and previous boards have questioned why money items are presented for approval after the fact, if the reason for the expenditure and the amount of the expenditure are known well in advance. This really is not good financial accountability on the part of the district. My other reason for bringing this issue forward is to question how the days and times were scheduled for these games to take place. The first game was scheduled on a Thursday evening at seven o'clock, allowing parents from both campuses and other interested fans to attend. Yet, the Bowie Jefferson game has been scheduled for Saturday at eleven o'clock in the morning. Considering how hot our days have been, why would we have fans sitting on both sides of the stadium in the dead heat of the sun? There is no reason the Bowie Jefferson game should be at eleven o'clock in the morning as UTEP football is playing out of town, and there are no events scheduled that evening. All I ask is that as schedules are put together, that there is better coordination between EPISD and UTEP in setting up game times so that whatever schools are playing, fans can attend and enjoy the game in comfort. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. This will take us to item six H. This is Mr. Ross Moore, memorandum of understanding between El Paso ISD and Region Nineteen for TEA Reading Academy's comprehensive cohorts.
Board President Ira Bali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, my name is Ross Moore, and I am urging you to vote no on spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the reading academy. Here's my logic. With Amplify, why do you need it? Amplify and reading academies are apples and oranges. Reading academies require and encourage flexibility. As I shared earlier, Amplify is a very tightly timed program. Basically, reading academies were overcome by events when Amplify came on board. So don't spend this money. I'm sure there's better things we could do of a hundred fifty thousand dollars extra. And again, at consultation, we were told reading academies were ended this year. So why spend this money? There's better things to do it on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That will take us to six J, approval of revisions to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four extra performance pay in instructional stipends, miscellaneous pay rates, and substitute pay rate listings, and that's Ms. Norma De La Rosa. No, no, no longer? Okay, Mrs. Norma De La Rosa does not wish to speak on the item. That will take us to six O, which is review the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget development calendar, and that is Mr. Ross Moore.
Board President Ira Bali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, my name is Ross Moore, president of El Paso AFT. Look through the budget calendar being proposed today. Pleasantly surprised to see that consultation's included at the end of March on this. What I'd ask, though, is earlier engagement in preparing for that submission with consultation in terms of being open, fully transparent, apparent on where things are going, so we can actually, because if you really want meaningful, thoughtful input from us instead of just kind of guessing where things are, you need to share information, be open and honest with us. You know, I understand there's things not to be released to public, but have we ever broken our word to keep something private when we said we would or when we were asked to? No, we haven't. So I ask you to trust us, work with us, and I yield the rest of my time to, oh no.
As, as the chair of the consultation, this is, this is an issue that we have consistently asked to be a part of, is to be a part of this budget development. We present budget compensation packages for you all to consider, but as part of putting that package together for us, we also like to know where the district is coming from, where their figures are coming from, and what it is that they're looking at so that we can prepare adequately for ourselves as well. But we also would like to be, since it is part of the working conditions for our employees, what their compensation will be and what their budgets will look like at the campuses for resources and materials, we'd like to be a part of that process as the process begins so that we can also add our input based on what we are hearing from the employees in the district about where they would like to see money placed. And being able to be a part of that process earlier in the process will definitely help to make this a better process for everybody.
In closing, this is a good step in the right direction. Like, I was not being sarcastic when I said I was pleased to do it, but bring us into it earlier, have a little faith in us not to go blabbing around, so we can actually present pragmatic recommendations and proposals, not just kind of guessing, well, let's see, I like the number nine percent or the number seven percent, where we can actually work and understand what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, and that will take us to six P six, which is the approval of funding source correction for previously approved expenditures in Access Intervention Management, LLC, and that is Ms. Sherry Rider. Thank you, Ms. Rider.
Board President Ira Bali, board members, Mrs. Ayvedra, my name is Sherry Rider. I'm a speech pathologist at Murfree Pre-K eight. This is not a joke. How many outside contracts will there be for speech pathology services at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars each? So far, there are three, two for Stepping Stones Group and one for Access Intervention Management. The fact that Access Intervention Management was previously approved for expenditure is very concerning. What is the purpose of using this company? Don't get me wrong, we need the help, but the question is, why do we need to spend so much money on an out-of-town company when we have resources in our own backyard? Why would you spend money on this and not on the SLPs already here? I urge you to use what you have in front of you, not outsiders with contracts being two hundred thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rider. Trustees, is there any items that you wish to pull off the consent agenda?
Six P six.
Six P six. Um, six F. Six F and anything else, trustees? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with omitting six F and six P six?
So moved.
Second.
So that's a motion made by trustee Hernandez, a second by trustee Call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? That item passes unanimously, seven zero, and that will take us to item six F, which was pulled by Dr. Osavedo because he has to recuse himself to have a motion on this item. It's a motion by trustee Hernandez.
Second.
Second by trustee Call. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition? That passes six O with one abstention from Dr. Osavedo, and then that will take us to item six P six, which is the approval of funding source correction for previously approved expenditures, as I just read, and that was Ms. Hernandez that pulled the item.
So I guess my first question would be, if this is moving from ESR to federal funding, is this going to be an anticipated recurring cost because it is moving to that funding source would be my first question?
Good afternoon, President Ira Bali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, I'm Ms. Aguirre, Chief Financial Officer. So the funding source was moved from ESR funding to IDEA funds as the funding source. This is a service that is a recurring, if there were be services that would be also used in the, in the future years, it would be...
Ms. Aguirre, can you hold on one second? I don't think the microphone's working.
So my understanding of what you just shared, Ms. Aguirre, is that originally it was budgeted through ESR funds, and you're moving it from ESR funds to the funds, IDEA funds because it is a recurring cost?
Yes.
Yes. And so this is not a new contract? This is the same contract, you're just adjusting funding. Am I correct?
That's correct. The contract itself was approved, I believe, is not in May, in June. However, the funding, because it's a different funding source, we brought it back to the board for improvement.
Can you just explain why the funding source was, was moved?
Ms. Ayvedra, Ms. Ayvedra and members of the board, we originally brought the contract under ESR funds. However, ESR funds expire October of this year, so, you know, in order to guarantee that we have therapists, you know, throughout the school year, we were able to transfer them through IDEA funds.
Okay, so just, I want a correction here. So, Ms. Aguirre, not all ESR funds expire in October, but this particular ESR, it must have been ESR two, am I correct, expires in October?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's...
So this was just an expenditure that was moved from IDEA before over to ESR, it's now being back, moved back to IDEA?
Yes.
And then the, the next question I have is what the difference is between this particular vendor and Stepping Stones?
So Stepping Stones, they provide the same services, they're going to be occupational therapy and speech. The funding source will be different because we no longer have ESR funds, they're now under general funds. You know, it's just to guarantee because when we put the bidding process out, when we actually get vendors, we can guarantee that we have vendors, somebody's awarded, but that is where we have the therapist who provided the therapy. And as you all know, therapy is a federal requirement, you know, we need to be serving our kids, we currently have vending campuses that don't have therapists. Six of them are being covered by current SLPs to include our early childhood intervention team, and so right now we were able to hire, you know, an SLP that's covering two additional campuses, but we do have three campuses without services. Douglas, Midam, and, Douglas, Midam, and Bowie, they don't have anybody providing services, so whoever can provide a therapist, whether it's ESR or it's Stepping Stones, will be using those funds to cover that there.
And then my last question is, are these the only two vendors that we currently utilize for SLP services?
That's correct. They were the only awarded.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Osavedo? I, I guess I'm a little confused on your explanation, if you could be elaborate a little bit more on, does this vendor not have enough capacity, and that's why we need a second vendor to come up with the capacity? Is, is that what's...
So that usually what happens, we have districts right now all over Texas, all over the nation, ready that need services, and so they may have them at a certain point, but by the time we get the process or we get the approvals, by the time we go back and ask, you know, if they can provide those services, they no longer have therapists available. So that's a reason why we have several vendors, to see who can provide us an SLP or a therapist before the other.
I guess my other question, just to clarify, so the, the budget amount that the board sees, that's if services are delivered. So if, so if we're, we've awarded two vendors and the board approves contracts for two vendors, but let's say we, we don't use one of the vendors because the other vendor is, consistently supplies the services, then that contract is, is not ever, you know, put into motion or funds expended. Am I correct?
That's correct. You know, because you should approve it, and at the end of the date, they don't have service providers, you know, we wouldn't use any of those funds.
And, and so usually do you, with this one, I feel like this one has the precedent, right, because we've used it for a few years now? Do we usually max out at the two hundred thousand, or like, let's say the last three years, what has been the amount that we've used?
I wouldn't, I, I can get that, you know, I can get that information, I don't know if we've actually maxed out, but I can tell you just like, you know, on independent evaluations through our SLPs, last year just on ESR funds, we spent a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and those are secondary evaluations performed through our own SLPs, you know, evaluators, our dyacs, you know, but I can get you that information to make sure if we maxed out on vendor services.
So I'll add that to the pending list, Ms. Osavedo.
Or Dr. Osavedo, I should say.
I just have one question. If we're moving two hundred thousand from ESR funding, or that was going to be ESR funding, do we have a plan for that two hundred thousand before it elapses this October? Yes?
We do.
Okay, so it's not going to go to waste? Okay, thank you. I'm just verifying. So do I have a motion to approve on this six?
I move that the board approve the revision to the funding source of ESR Special Education Speech Language Pathology Services, RFP twenty-three dash zero six five, previously awarded on June twenty of two thousand twenty-three, from the SR three program funds to IDEA federal program funds.
Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hernandez and a second by trustee Call. On favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those in opposition?
Aye.
So that is five yays with trustee Osavedo, trustee Hernandez, trustee Ira Bali, trustee Beals, trustee Call, two in opposition, trustee Cuellar, and trustee Hernandez. So that will take us to item seven, action items. A, which is the approval of the First Amendment to vendor contract and option to extend ESR Special Education Related Services, RFP number twenty-two dash zero four one, to the Stepping Stones Group, LLC, local funds not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Ms. Ayvedra? Well, I think we have public comment on this one, correct, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes. We have three speakers. Ross Moore, seven eight.
Board President Ira Bali, board members, Ms. Ayvedra, I urge you to vote no on this because there's a lot of unanswered questions or concerns. Number one, what are the metrics of success? I've seen none. And anecdotal information says these guys messed up a lot and that SLPs are still cleaning up their mess from last year. Next, cost savings. Got to question that. District, a midpoint on an SLP is seven hundred and thirty, uh, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents, or fifty-four dollars and sixty-five cents an hour based on an eight-hour day. SSG is going to charge you seventy-five dollars an hour at six hundred dollars a day. That's a significant difference and kind of helps justify, maybe we need to bump SLPs up to a seven. By the way, these guys are only getting paid something like forty-five bucks, the ones that actually do the work. So it's a tidy profit, and I understand you save things like taxes and benefits, but in the long run, they're costing the district more. Liability issue, didn't see anything in there about, is district liable when one of their employees screws up, or a parent sues because of mistreatment or maltreatment or not meeting the IEP or noncompliance? Who's liable? The company or the district? And I hope it's not, you know, they can do whatever they want and taxpayers are going to have to foot the bill. Are they bound by EPISD policy? And I mean all aspects of that. They're interacting with kids, just like my SLP members have to follow EPISD policies completely. Do they? Or are there certain things they don't have to worry about getting, you know, and how do you handle a discipline issue? For example, one of the problems they had at a Pennsylvania school was one of their providers, one of their therapists got drunk drinking wine in the therapy sessions with kids. Okay? Who, who picks up that liability? A little concerned about corporate governance, there's some oddities in that that AFT came across with this company. It is a large corporate, corporation, will have a very intricate structure of who owns what and who's moving around from what position within that to what position. And is this the camel's nose under the tent? You know? You know, previously, this would have been attempted by other folks who are no longer with us, fortunately. Is this getting the camel's nose under the tent to start contracting out jobs? And specifically, it almost, you know, to get, you know, SLPs have spoken up.
Thank you.
They will speak to, to power.
Time.
Is this targeting them to move them out in the future? Thank you.
Sherry Ryder.
Good afternoon or evening, President Urbali, board members, Mrs. Ayvedra. My name is Sherry Ryder. I'm back. I am absolutely appalled that this action item, contract to Stepping Stones Group, is back on the agenda after being denied last month. I received a text message from this company asking me if I wanted to work in EPISD. How funny. I already do. You see, there's a small pool of us in EPIS, in El Paso. We all get the same text messages. This and all of the other companies are recruiting our own people. We all know how this works. I get job offers all the time. If I inquire, the HR department thinks, oh, we got one. Guess what? It's your current employees. I guess the joke's on them. Why is this even up for approval after it failed the first time? This company has slithered into the district and is already advertising that they're hiring for EPISD. Really? How can that even be when they have not been approved? They're supposed to provide in-house therapy, not teletherapy, yet that is what they did with the one person that was contracted. Unfortunately, she only supervised an SLP assistant to do the actual work and did not help. She in fact created more of a mess for us to clean up. Please, please, please continue to vote no and invest the money on the SLPs that you already have and to help obtain full employees, not contracted ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Sierra.
The previously awarded 200,000 that was approved for contracted speech therapy services was something I had no idea about until I saw the correction on the agenda. The hourly rate for the chosen company, Access Intervention Management LLC, is 75 dollars an hour. I like Dr. Rossovedo's quick math moments, eight hours a day at that rate is 600 dollars a day. Let's set that disturbing fact aside for a second and point out a bigger fact. The Stepping Stones Group contract shows a rate of 75 or 80 dollars an hour. However, they will be paying their SLPs a rate of 48 dollars an hour. Many of us in the district are getting their emails and responding. I would hope that no one would be okay with a contract company making extra profit instead of investing in your own people. Let's be realistic, 600 dollars a day where 216 dollars of that goes to an out-of-town company. Why is anyone okay with that? It seems absolutely absurd that I am having to point out the obviousness of this. So 216 dollars a day goes to an out-of-town company's profit from local funds that we SLPs help to bring into the district and generate through billable services, but we're having to justify our worth. The Stepping Stones Group was not on the EBIT list because there was a clause to be able to extend their contract the following year. So was the first contract from AIM LLC. Getting approved for 200,000 in June to go into effect July 2023 through June 2024, was it not enough? So a second contract for another 200,000 from a different group was requested as well, all while no compensatory services were made up during the school year, from what we know. And when several SLPs offered to work in the summer to help make up compensatory services, no one ever heard back. But it sure seems to be a top priority to get an out-of-town based company, or two, to help us. And it's good for another four years to be continued as an option. Let me be clear, my intention is not to push away help. I just want you all to be able to make informed decisions in this process. This is still a crisis situation if the leadership is asking for another 200,000 for an extension of a contract to go along with a previously approved solicitation from a different company for another 200,000. Moving it, the SLPs to a 107 is not an action item today. Instead, it became a task for HR to disprove the need for raising our pay, but it's okay to ask for over 550,000 for contract services from different companies to include Stepping Stones. And might I add, the phrase in the contract contingent upon satisfactory delivery of goods and/or services is included. Who determines that? Seeing the amount of compensatory services owed does not seem like satisfactory delivery of goods and services. Thank you.
Thank you. President Urbali, those were the three speakers.
Okay, Ms. Ayvedra, we'll hand it off to you.
Can I have staff step up to the podium, please, and share information about the need and the contract associated with Stepping Stones?
Sure. This contractor was approved through an RFP. Just to make everybody aware, we, again, we currently have 11 campuses that are not, that are in need of a, of an SLP service provider. We have been able to provide services through current employees, you know, assigning them additional campuses. We have our early childhood intervention team already out there. We do have a new hire that took two additional campuses, still leaving three campuses without any, you know, any personnel to cover the, the needs of our students. When we look at the, at the contract, again, you know, it is if they are available, one, if they have the personnel available, we're looking at funds that once we hire, we won't need to be able to contract out because we will have the personnel. When we look at, you know, salaries and the pay grade, I, I have a question because we're looking at the needs of our students, which is a federal requirement, and our current SLPs, you know, going from a 106 to a 107, and my question becomes, how, how would, would they be able to carry all that additional load, you know, just by moving them from one pay grade to the other, you know, which is money that we really don't, don't have right now, you know, if we were to go that route, you know, through IDEA B.
Do we have any questions, trustees? I know this item was presented last, last meeting. I, I do have a, a question, actually. Give me a second because I just lost it. Oh, last, last time we had this item, which was in August, I guess, the question was asked, I think it was by Trustee Call, whether or not this would impact students. And I recall that the maybe was the answer, if I can just oversimplify it. It sounds like it did impact our students because we did have it. So we, that, that decision to deny actually had a cost to our students, is that correct?
It does.
Okay. So then similar question I'll ask this time, if we deny this item, will it have an impact on our students that need those services?
It will because we won't have, if they have any therapist available that we could contract at this moment, we wouldn't be able to hire them to provide those services to the campuses that are in need.
Okay. And then in regards to accountability questions that's been brought up about the previous relationship with Stepping Stones, is there an accountability process that exists to ensure that the work that they're providing is being held to the, the same standard that we would have for our own employees versus contract employees? And, and if not, is that part of this process? And if so, is it as stringent?
Ms. Collins, I guess my question before Ms. Reyes answers is, are those provisions outlined in the contract?
A couple of things that I heard in the, the comment to the contract is whether or not that the company had to abide by our, our, our rules and policies. And yes, they do, they have to use a standard of care that professionals do. They have to provide, they have to indemnify the school district, so there's an indemnification clause in favor of the school district. And in addition to that, they have to provide insurance in the amount of 1 million, 2 million dollars professional liability for errors and omissions.
And Ms. Collins, indemnification is, is legal risk, if I'm correct in that, that they can, like, to Mr. Moore's point?
If, so if somebody were to sue the district, the company has to indemnify us, meaning they have to hold us harmless, they have to put themselves in the place of the district and, and make sure the district is not harmed.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Could you just kind of give us an overview of what the shortage for SLPs is in El Paso generally and how you believe that it affects other districts in addition to ours? It's hard to get that information based on the presentation or the backup.
Yes, ma'am. So I have researched with other districts and if you notice, every single one of their websites currently has an SLP opening, you know. I did talk to two other big districts and Socorro, the last time I talked to them, they had five SLP vacancies. Isleta was completely filled, so they didn't, they had a posting, but they didn't have the need for it. I know Texas statewide, we just had a meeting with Region 19 yesterday, and there was a presenter from TK's who talked about the shortage, you know, of SLPs and special ed personnel all over, you know, Texas and nationwide. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know if Isleta contracts their services out?
I don't know if Isleta contracts their services. I know Socorro does contract out services and I can probably imagine Isleta would too. I don't know if they're contracting anybody out at this point.
I guess for me, I think what I struggle with the most is more, it's kind of hard to discern what the market situation is compared to what our situation is specifically. It appears as though we have the most vacancies. It appears as though we have the most speakers consistently and our board members expressing dissatisfaction. So that's concerning because we want our outside contract vendors to be a short-term solution versus a long-term solution. And, and right now, it's really hard for, for us, and I'll speak for myself, to really discern whether that actually, this actually is a short-term solution, given the things that we're hearing and giving, given the information that's presented to us. So I think that's what makes this difficult for me to support, is that I just can't get the sense of what the long-term solution is. And so I guess my question to you would be, what is the long-term solution and what is the district doing to make the contract vendor, or the, the contract servicing of SLPs in our district more of a short-term thing?
Well, let, let me, let me start off and then I'll hand it off to you. I, I would share that this is a, a pretty complicated situation. Again, special ed services in the form, you know, in, in, in the way that SLPs, diagnosticians, LSSPs, all of those job-like roles are, are at a premium across the state of Texas. So they're, they're difficult to, to hire for. My experience in previous districts is we had, you know, challenges with vacancies as well. I think when we think about the market in El Paso and the limited resources that we have in comparison to other bigger metropolitan areas, it, it creates a, a greater challenge for us. I'm not saying that that is the only reason why we have problems filling or have challenges filling our, our vacancies. So that's number one, I think is, it's important that these positions are difficult to fill. Secondly, I would say that we are looking at somewhat of a short-term solution, but also making sure that we have a safety net so that we don't find ourselves accumulating significant numbers of compensatory services that we need to deliver to our students. And you're absolutely right, we do need to make a concerted effort to, you know, very aggressively recruit for these positions so that we can fill those positions. I know that in our reports, we're going to share with you some information about the, you know, analysis that we've done in terms of our, our compensation. But I do believe that there are, you know, recruitment efforts that we can initiate. There are partnerships with a number of universities that, that we need to partner with so that we can build a pipeline and, you know, again, look at compensation over time while we consider this short-term solution that's before you as a board at this point to make sure that no services are denied, you know, to our students and that we don't include, you know, accrue compensatory time that we have to deliver to our students. So I don't know if you have any additional things to add, Ms. Reyes? And there may be additional questions?
Just one, I guess one last statement. I mean, I think it's, it's really important for us to be very clear that all of us want to make sure that our students have access to services. I, I don't think that when we talk about how to navigate the challenges that we're experiencing, any of us are, you know, at, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that our students have as, just the best that we can possibly give them. That being said, you know, I, I really would like to see more of a plan when we are, when we have situations where we're not really providing these long-term strategies. You know, anytime we have contracted services, I'm, I'm thinking of if there's a vacancy because somebody's taking FMLA or somebody had a baby, I mean, what are the parameters that define when we should be relying on contracted services? And again, what are specific recruitment strategies that we're going to be implementing to make sure that this is, that we have a long-term strategy in mind? Those are the things that I would really like to see before we're asked to, and really, you know, it's two contract, two contracts today that we're voting on. So in the midst of that, I, I would really love to see something, you know, within a given timeframe that will help us address this as an, as an issue so that we can provide the best quality services to our students at any given time.
So if I'll add, we provided a board update about two weeks ago that outlined both tentative solution as well as, so short-term, long-term. And so what we wanted to do in that is to be able to share where we had vacancies and what the temporary solution was, while we are either waiting for people to be onboarded who had already accepted positions or where we knew that we would have slots where we could fill as vacancies are filled. And so we wanted to provide a little bit of both, is a long-term would always be to have a full-time SLP in those positions. But then we had another column that had it, had temporary solutions, which would include SLPs who are sharing or who are, have taken on an additional campus, where we had outside support or where we had other teams that were coming in to be able to provide assistance. What we did also include in there is even when people are taking on an additional site, that we want to be a temporary piece. So they're adding a caseload or they're taking on additional responsibilities. So even though there's only three campuses now that are not providing support, we had an additional list of campuses that have temporary solutions, but we also didn't want those to turn into long-term because that means those people who are taking on additional campuses or where we're providing additional services that are temporary, that, that's not sustainable. So we do recognize, but we are also trying to determine what's going to be the best route to be able to provide access to students in the immediate while we're working on the hiring piece and where we're starting to look at those vacancies and recruitment efforts, but not allowing students to go without service.
Trustee Call?
I supported this last month and although, you know, I've, I've heard the, the concerns today and I share many of those, many of those concerns, having to, having to, to go the private route here. To me, this, this decision's really simple. Right now, there's kids that are not getting services, period. We're a month and a half into school, before we know it, we're going to be six months into the school year and I cannot stand the fact, knowing, as a, as a father of, you know, a child that receives these services, I can't stand knowing that there's a lot of kids out there, some that I know for a fact, that are slipping through the cracks and not getting the services that they need. To me, that makes it easy.
Trustee Hernandez?
And this primarily is just an amendment to extend the current contract that we have, correct? For just provide? It's an amendment to, to extend it.
First, are you referring to first step? Yes.
Yes, for this item 7A. And I just wanted to make that clear, that it's just an amendment of what we already have in place. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Rossovedo? I guess, so between last month and then this board meeting, I, there's a lot swirling in my head, so I'm going to try to put it out there. I guess, so between last month and then this board meeting, I, there's a lot swirling in my head, so I'm going to try to put it out there. This vendor is not new. We've been working with them just like we've been working with Access Intervention Management.
That's correct.
Okay, so one of the things that, just from everything that's been discussed in the past few minutes that comes to mind is that it, it's really just highlighting a need for us to act on data and be data-driven on what, what we're needing these services because I think it makes it a lot easier than you coming up here and saying we need it. And if, and earlier it was like, oh, did we lose, did we not provide services to students in the past month because we didn't pass it? And you were like, yeah, how many students? I don't have that data with me right now.
I can tell you, one campus, you know, has 69 right now, students that we didn't provide services for.
And Access Intervention was not available to provide that even though that was already in place since June?
That's correct because we were using ESR funds for that which were removed and that's why we brought that contract back to the board to approve through IDAB funds.
So, but why were the ESR funds removed if they don't expire until October? Why couldn't they just stay in place until, let's say, today when we just voted to approve it? That doesn't make sense to me to cut services just because we removed the funding.
So we needed to bring it back. We needed to bring it back because when you, when you enter the contract, you have that money reserved for that contract. So we knew we weren't going to be able to utilize it all by October, which is when they need to spend it. We needed to make those funds available so they could be used elsewhere. And we needed to supplement, you know, or bring in a new account for the, for the AIM contract at that moment. So I don't know if Ms. Aguirre would have additional information on that, but you know, we, again, you know, by the time you go through the procurement process, those funds need to be available so they can be spent by that October deadline.
So I, but I guess the question for Dr. Acevedo is that was it necessary to suspend services while we were bringing this back to the board? So I'm going to defer to our general counsel on that.
I, I don't know that I can answer that question about that. There was a contract that was in place. It was approved by the board. The funding source was incorrect and they had to bring it back to the board for that, to correct that funding source because that's not the source that they were going to use originally. So from that perspective, they may have had to suspend services, but I don't know if they had other services available through them, through some other alternative.
Well, yeah, but my question was specifically if we're required to suspend services simply to bring back revenue source change to the board? Because the contract is still in place, how we're going to pay for that contract is what's in question. So what I heard you say, that even if how we're going to pay for a contract is in question, we, we have to suspend services?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take that back because I, I do think that they could have provided services under the contract as it was written as, as long as they could pay it because you're going to get paid on a monthly basis according to this contract. This particular contract, they are billed on a monthly basis. They could have gotten the services and then brought it back to the board for the change in, in the funding source, but then you risk the, you risk the fact that the board might not approve the funding source, which is a discussion that was today.
That was the, that's the, that's the piece. We wanted to pause so that we could come back with a new funding source approved before we continue.
When, when did you realize that you needed a new funding source?
It was sometime soon after. I, I, I'm thinking late July, early August that we found out we needed a new funding source, you know, for this contract in particular.
Because to me, that, that would make sense to add it to the August agenda and then you're kind of, that's when I would be like, okay, we're, if we don't do it, we're suspending services because of this funding source. Does that make sense? And so now bringing it in September and then kind of saying, well, we didn't do services and 69 kids and we need it. Do you see where I'm, I'm, I'm a little kind of perplexed around this whole thing? And if you gave us the data and said, you know what, this is what's happening and this is how many kids, but other than we need it, like, for, for me, and I've said this before, it's, it's really difficult to come to the board and then kind of say, well, we really need it. Or if you don't vote now, like, we're not going to be able to do this. I don't like being put in those situations and I've said this before and I think other board members have also said that. And so it would just, again, I go back to the data. If there was data that kind of showed this and you don't have it, and, and this thought just came up right now in the board as we're having this discourse. So I would have requested it had I thought of this and connected all these dots. I didn't connect them until right now. And so it's just really, really difficult to kind of support this and we don't really know where we're going with it.
And, and we did notify procurement right away what the next steps needed to happen, you know, for us to take, you know, action in it. And as soon as, you know, we emailed them, we corrected that funding source, we put it back on the board agenda. Yes, sir.
And just one last one. So do you think if you would have been able to use AIM at that point funding source aside, then it would have been a lot less than 69 students at that one campus?
Well, it would have been less students that would need compensatory services at this time, yes, sir.
Because AIM was in place and we just haven't had anything in place for the last two months.
Right.
One for a funding source and one because the board moved this to September.
That's correct.
What I just wanted to just clarify from Dr. Acevedo is what he's asking and I'm glad he put it that way, but in other words, you have to be able to justify and help us understand why this is happening. And just with backup, as he was saying, with data, so we can consume or rather absorb what's happening so we'll be able to understand why these funds are needed for the long-term, for the purposes of what it was truly used for, even though we may have needed to dip into two funding sources to provide the services.
Sure, and, and I'll, I will do that from here on. I can also provide you an update as to the number of students that are currently being affected. That way you all have those numbers.
And, and I would add, like, I, I want to see what AIM is doing now that this has been approved before looking at the stepping stones, at least in my opinion. Maybe the board approves it, I don't know. But for me, I, I think I want to see AIM cover the gap for the next month and kind of have that update with the board. That would be really helpful, I think.
Absolutely. Since that's, that's first come, first served, now we're going to get in line once approved to request services. So they're kind of on hold, so it, it, it's not that as soon as we go, they have a line of people waiting because everyone's accessing the same services. So we'll make our requests. We'll start from there.
Trustee Henan.
I, I mean, I, I think, you know, most of us are on the same page in the sense of no, no one wants a child to be denied services. At the same time, no one also wants to be put in a position where we're being told, if you don't do this, children are going to suffer. And so I think we're all trying to find that, the balance of having that short-term and long-term solution, just as Dr. Kennedy mentioned. So what I, I think I'd like to see is this brought back to the board possibly next month or if the, if, you know, and I'm happy to request it on the, on the agenda, either next month or the following month just so that we have a more comprehensive overview of what the long-term plan is. And also maybe possibly a climate survey from our SLPs because it's really just hard for us to get all this information because we're, you know, we're getting a lot of information at once and we really would like to dig into it a little bit more. It's, it's hard to understand the entire scope of the situation based on what's on the backup. And then we hear we have some districts that don't have any vacancies. You know, what are they doing right? What can we take away from them? What is the full climate? So that's what I'm going to ask for and so that will give me a little bit of relief if I support this just knowing that our kids do need those services, but also it's coming back to us and a little bit more comprehensively. And if there's any, any way that it'd be helpful for us to meet in the interim, just so that maybe we can understand it a little bit better. But I do really want to tackle this head-on.
So I, I would, Daniel, trustee Call was one of the ones that supported this item last time. Nothing frustrates me more than when our students are being impacted because of adult decisions, whether it's the information that's not coming to us or we're not taking the action that needs to be done to happen. I think on this specific item, even if the funding source needed to be corrected, we would have had stepping stones to rely on. So we would have had services at least somewhere while those changes were being made. So to hear that a minimum of 69 kids went without these services, it's extremely frustrating because that's our main duty. And while I appreciate the need for a, a, a long-term plan and everything else, we need to put services in place for these kids while these plans are being made because we can't continue to have them to suffer or the lag of what happens when they don't get these services for so long and then what that takes to catch them back up. So, you know, I'm happy you guys brought this back. I'm going to make a motion to approve because I think it's extremely important. It, it's unfortunate that this is the second month and we're going to hopefully get it done. And then from my understanding with your explanation, this puts us back at the bottom of the line for all those contractor, I guess they're contracted SLPs. So if Socorro, Faben, Sanelli are well in the queue before us, we're the last one to the table on this one?
And even around Texas, you know, it could be around Texas.
So that further upset me because it does feel like we did a disservice to our, our kids and that's hard for me in my district to explain that. So I made a motion to approve. I don't know if there's a second.
Can I, can I make one comment?
Yeah, after, after I get the motion, I'll go back to discussion.
Okay, second.
So I have a motion, second, and then trustee Call.
Okay, you all talked about the queue, right? Like, that people are in line, almost like a clearinghouse, like?
That's correct.
Okay, if we're paying for these services, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be abrupt or abrasive, but if we're paying for these services and they're in the hundreds of thousands, then there shouldn't be any wait or lag time in providing those services to those students.
We don't pay until we actually have an SLP provided to us.
Sure, but if there's a queue and we're waiting for those services, then I think at that point we try to find a different vendor. I mean, if, if there's a problem with that, then yeah, I, I know Dr. Kennedy is motioning, you know, that's why we have two vendors. But then it still goes back to where, and I think one of the SLPs is in my district and I'd met her when I was walking and talking and, you know, talking with the SLPs, I, I understand that there's a lot of angst there, right? And, and maybe some, some battle. I guess that's the easiest way I can say it. But on the flip side, if we have SLPs that are supposed to be at a certain ratio, but then they're not and they're having to cut short their services to their students, plus we have two different vendors, then there's a breakdown there where the SLPs aren't providing the services that they should be providing for even though they're doing the best to their, you know, you know, position and ability and, 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 you know, just time being a factor, right? So I guess those are, those are my issues and I would mimic and, you know, piggyback off of what, you know, trustee Henan stated too and, and trustee Call, you know, we don't want to leave kids without services, but on the, on the flip side, if we're having to wait in line, if we're having to pay all this money and we still have SLPs that are being inundated with work and students, where's the solution?
So just for you all to know, there, there are some SLPs that have over 100 caseloads. However, they're also offered an SLPA who takes care of some of that therapy. So while, you know, the median or the task fee recommendation can be anywhere from 45 to 50, I can tell you districts in the region are not there. I can tell you, you know, Isleta is using their caseload at elementary is at 60, their secondary is at 100. Similar with, well, actually higher with Socorro, they're at about 70. With, you know, an SLPA up to 110, you know, around that. So we do have the SLPAs that assist, you know, after a certain amount of cases, they do come in and they help our, our SLPs to continue providing those services.
So I have a motion by myself, a second by trustee Call. All in favor? Aye.
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 All in opposition?
No. No.
I didn't hear you. Aye. I can know our ideas.
I can know.
So that motion passes with four affirmative votes from trustee Call, trustee Beals, trustee Iribali, trustee Hernandez, with three in opposition being trustee Henan, trustee Acevedo, and trustee Cuellar. And that now takes us to eight, item, yeah, eight reports, which is 8A, and I believe we have public comment on this item.
Sir, President Iribali, we have three speakers. First speaker, Ross Moore, Sheri Ryder, and Camryn Sierra. If you could just come on up as soon as the next person has finished speaking, so there's no delay. Thank you.
Board President Iribali, board members, Mrs. Ayaveira, my name is Ross Moore, President El Paso AFT. Mr. Hernandez, that's a really good system that you just put in place. Thank you. Saves time. Okay, that being said, on SLPA pay, got some things for you to ponder as you make this decision. Well, it's not an action item, pardon me, but to ponder. If EPISD is the best of all work environment places for SLPs, why aren't SLPs from neighboring districts beating down the doors to get into the district? If EPISD is the best of all possible worlds, why can't HR attract even the newbies from UTEP? Zero out of 30 is not a good batting average. If EPISD pay for, is so wonderful for SLPs, why isn't there a huge influx of YISD, SISD, and Clint SLPs into this district? Yeah, you're going to see a very Gucci, to use an old phrase, presentation. I urge you, don't be enthralled. That was what I was taught when we were presented those. Be suspicious. Motto of my shop over at JTF Six where we did counter drug stats was, stats are us, what's your point? We'll prove it. And that's what, having gone through this representation, I think you're getting here. Look at this with a very skeptical eye on what you're about to see. It's too Gucci to be real.
Thank you. Sheri Ryder.
Good afternoon, Board President Iribali, board members, Mrs. Ayaveira. I would really like for you guys to listen to what I have to say. The presentation that you're going to watch from HR is full of inaccuracies and falsehoods. I've seen it. I moonlight in the private sector as well as working in the public schools. Getting information from Glassdoor, Indeed, and other online salary websites does not give you an accurate picture of what the private sector pays. When I work for a client, I charge $100 a session. Each session is approximately 15 minute, 50 minutes with 10 minutes to discuss therapy progress with parents and/or documentation. There's no way I would work for $28 an hour. The fact that these are estimated at 226-day contracts, which we don't work, nor do we have a contract, speaks volumes of the bogus research that is being, that is going to be presented. A colleague of mine who works at one of the aforementioned companies does not make such a pittance either. She told me that she makes $75 a half-hour session. Does that seem strange to you that any SLP would work for $28 an hour, $32 an hour, et cetera, when there are job openings everywhere? HR would have you believe that this is a true and accurate picture of the private sector. It's not. YISD and SISD pay at least $5,000 more than EPISD. Again, HR is not telling you the truth. They continuously try to discredit the speech pathologists. Why would the SLPs not tell you the reality of our situation? We have nothing to gain by lying or being deceitful. The same cannot be said with the HR department. Ladies and gentlemen, the SLPs of EPISD want to do right by the children of the district. With all of the work that EPISD keeps piling on top of us, we need help. And the more people to come into the district and not contract people that you won't be able to find, we can alleviate the out-of-control caseloads and give the children our very best. Paying us more is the only way to keep and attract new people. While we are doing our very best to serve them with the shortages, we are not. Please consider moving the SLPs to the 107 with the new pay grade scales associated with it and God willing, we will be the best in the district to, we will be the best district to work in. I also want to point out that with this being my 39th year as an SLP in this state of Texas, I should be at the maximum of the maximum, yet I'm not. Why? Manipulation of the numbers. Yes, we all know that HR does that. Thank you.
Thank you. Camryn Sierra.
Good evening.
You asked how much it would cost the district to move the SLPs from a 106 to a 107 previously. Do you see that information on the prepared slides? Because I don't. I see skewed data that is trying to paint an inaccurate picture from Glassdoor.com, Indeed.com, and Salary.com. This is also including data for a two-hundred-and-twenty-six day position when we only work a hundred-and-ninety-two days. Please keep in mind, we still don't have our contract, we don't have, we don't know our pay, we don't have one showing more than one-hundred-and-eighty-seven days. I am sure that you have felt the uneasiness in the room when no one had the same answer as to how many openings we have for SLPs. Yet, even with those numbers, no one is accounting for the huge caseloads that SLPs currently have. It's going to continue to be an issue, even when the others are filled in. In speaking with several SLPs from other districts over the past few weeks to gather more data, EPISD is not the highest-paid district for their SLPs. Apples to apples, YISD alone is five thousand more than EPISD at a minimum, and YISD and SISD stay competitive with each other for that reason. Entities outside of the school system get paid per visit, not per hour, so at a minimum, double what you are seeing and still question what you see. This is not misinterpretation of what was said or what was asked for, this is manipulation. If we were to be moved to a 107 and be more competitive with our pay, as one SLP from YISD stated, money talks, and I am sure that there will be some who listen and are willing to move. I'm advocating for the greater good, for the well-being of our students, who we work with every day in our district. If we become fully staffed with permanent employees, our children ages three to twenty-two will be better off for it. If we are fully staffed with permanent SLP employees, we would not spread so thin, be spread so thin, and literally falling apart. The students who we advocate for, from the second we encounter them throughout their journey in special education, the ones we do the extra work for to get them further testing and additional assistance when it's needed, they deserve it too. I love my job, I love the students who I work with, I love my district. I truly do believe that this may be the only solution to solve this ongoing staffing shortage with a long-term solution. Please help fulfill the dream of becoming fully staffed by approving the move of the SLPs to a pay grade of 107 at the appropriate years of experience at our designated one-hundred-and-ninety-two days on duty. Realistically speaking, if the charts that HR is sharing with you were true, and we were the highest-paid district for the SLP position, don't you think we would have had more to come over by now? Well, here's our chance to make that statement true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ayvedra, I pass it over to you and your staff.
Yes, thank you to President Iribali and trustees. I'm gonna ask Ms. Patty Cortez to step up to the podium to share information that she and Ms. Aguirre, our CFO, they conducted a salary analysis for the SLPs, and they're here to present their findings.
So we have one more, Ursula Martinez, is that correct? Okay, there was no item on it, so I apologize for that one. So if you want to come on up for your three minutes, sorry about that, staff, as well.
Hello again, my name is Ursula Martinez, and I've been a speech-language pathologist for the past twenty years here with EPISD. My main issue with our pay is HR tried to pull the wool over our eyes. They made it seem like they were gonna give us a raise by moving us up a pay grade and adding five additional days to our year, but instead they moved us up in name only. When HR was contacted by my colleagues, they reiterated that, that the move was not a raise. At last month's board meeting, I mentioned that I didn't know what my pay was. I still don't know. I won't know until the end of this week, when I get paid. Our caseloads have increased so much this year. My caseload hovered around eighty to eighty-five students last year and is now standing at one-hundred-and-twelve, which is a four-student increase since the last board meeting. MacArthur currently has a total of one-hundred-and-seventy-four special ed students. This past weekend, my diagnostician had to test a student on a Saturday without pay because we are so inundated with students. We have ARDs on a daily basis. This week, we only had one day without an ARD. Next week, we have all five days with an ARD. Last week, we had a day that was one ARD, and last week, we had a day with five ARDs in one day. HR and Sayavedra reported they recommended four new hired SLPs for employment, three out of the four declined the offer. We have such a dire need for SLPs, yet EPISD wants to pay two-hundred-thousand dollars to a company that did not provide compensatory services to our students when they were previously hired to do so. We have several speech therapists who took FMLA last year, and none of their compensatory time was ever touched. Why is there such a push by Sayavedra and HR to pay for a company that clearly did not do its job? Why isn't that money being used for the SLPs that are currently on payroll? HR asked, right now, how is moving the SLPs up a pay grade? How's that gonna help us do our jobs? Well, what it will do, HR, is it will bring in SLPs. That's how it will help us do our jobs. But you failed to look at that. We do not feel acknowledged or appreciated for the amount of work we do for the districts and our students. We all view our students as our kids, and we treat them like they are our kids. We are dedicated to our students and families. We want what is best for each of our students on our caseloads. All we are asking is that EPISD show us that same dedication and appreciation by moving us up to a one-hundred-and-seven pay scale, so that we can get our money's worth on our job, and we can bring in SLPs to take up the slack that is missing, and that they're paying the extra money for, for services that have yet to be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cortez.
Good evening, President Iribali, Ms. Sayavedra, I'm members of the board. I'm Patty Cortez, and I'm the Chief Human Capital Management Officer. And we do have a presentation for you today. I know you've, you've heard from several speakers today, and, and there's a lot of discussion behind the, the role, the important role of the SLPs, and, and the, the discussion that's come up related to the duties, the responsibilities, the volume of work they have, and of course, compensation has been a discussion that we've had, starting back in the spring. We provided information to you as we did the market analysis coming into this school year. So based on the, to give you the background there, based on the market analysis that was conducted in the spring, we found that there was a need to realign the SLPs, and therefore, the information that we provided back in the spring was that the SLPs warranted a pay grade adjustment to align them to pay grade 106. So at that time, we recommended that they be taken from pay grade 105 to pay grade 106. And in regards to the, the initiation of that pay, that actually takes place on September fifteenth, which is the first pay cycle for the SLPs, which provides notification and pay at that time for the September fifteenth paycheck. During the last board meeting, you did ask that we come back and have a conversation and presentation on the pay grade of the, of the SLPs, and it is what, is what we have for you today. So I'll go ahead and... Starting with this first slide, what we have here is a comparison of the current pay grade, which is the 106 for our, our speech-language pathologist. And what we show here is a comparative of our larger local districts, which is Isleta, YISD, SISD, and we also took some other Texas districts to identify where we are situated with our current pay grade of 106 for our SLPs. So what you see here is the EPISD minimum, mid, and max for the pay grade is your first column there, and in comparison to the districts that have been identified, that we are indicating that we have a higher midpoint along with min and mid for the pay grade for the SLPs. Now, in addition here, what we've included is, Oh, Isleta ISD does provide a fifteen-thousand-dollar stipend, and so we've incorporated that stipend into the daily rate to be able to get an equivalent comparison of, of that daily rate.
Ms. Cortez, can you specify, excuse me, sorry, can you specify the number of contract days?
Yes. So we are, SLPs recently were moved from one-hundred-and-eighty-seven days to a hundred-and-ninety-two, a hundred-and-ninety-two days. And Isleta ISD, I'm gonna have Ms. Pertle provide that information for you.
Good evening, Irma Pertle, Executive Director, Talent Acquisition and Personnel Administration. Yes, YISD has a hundred-and-eighty-eight days on duty for the SLPs, or two-twenty-six. Socorro, a hundred-and-eighty-seven, or through to twenty-six. Austin, one-eighty-seven. Fort Worth, one-eighty-seven, two-oh-two to ten. And San Antonio, one-eighty-seven.
So when you say one-eighty-seven to two-twenty-six, can you clarify that?
So they have a range on their pay scale depending on the, whether they're Cs or Masters, on the certification of the SLPs.
So if I could elaborate that, it would be different types of roles within the SLP, so they're designated different workdays within their work calendar. But the daily rate would be the same. Any other questions on this slide?
Yes, I have one. For the sake of the public, though, when you speak of midpoint, explain that for us.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. The, the midpoint of the pay grade identifies the market value of the position. So essentially, when you go out and you do a competitive analysis, that's going to give you the, essentially, the, the value of that position at that midpoint that you compare to other districts.
Therefore, midpoint in regards to somebody's career, somebody entry level versus somebody who's at the higher level, the midpoint.
The, the midpoint is going to be your mid-range. You, you do, you can go beyond the midpoint in terms of your, your experience, but the midpoint is essentially the value of the job that is compared to other, other organizations or employers. So this slide here, back to your point, Mr. Hernandez, what this provides is a comparison of EPISD current minimum, mid, and max, a daily rate, and in comparison to the average daily rate of the organizations that we provide as a comparative, is your middle column. Your last column provides the median daily rate of the market. And so again, it provides you the difference, and you see El Paso ISD, the minimum rate at three-fifty-eight, fifty-one, midpoint at four-thirty-seven, twenty-one, and maximum at five-fifteen, ninety-one. And so again, illustrating here is that EPISD with the recent change that we've made to the pay grade for the SLPs has put us above the, the median and the average. And, and then again, this is compared to the districts that we've identified in this presentation. And this slide here, talking about the private sector, this analysis was done really for the sake of, of comparing a district to the private sector, but as some speakers have, have shared today, this is a difficult analysis to really provide apples to apples because it does vary. But this essentially provides your minimum daily, your, your minimum entry level in the private sector. Are there any questions?
I do not see any trustees with any question. Nope, I take it back, Trustee Call. Thank you for the presentation. One more time, how many vacancies are we at?
We currently have eight vacancies, and those are identified as five within our core SLP group, and three under our SLPs that are identified as, as...
With Masters.
With the Masters, which means they, they haven't completed, completed the certification for, for the next pay grade.
So, if the information here is accurate, which I have no reason to doubt that it is, to me, here's where my mind goes. So I have to hire people pretty often, and contrary to popular belief, it isn't just about money. I, I mean, that's definitely probably the biggest motivating factor, is money. But just from hearing from our speakers and knowing human nature, it, it seems to me like the biggest turnoff right now is the, is the caseload. If, if, if our, our compensation is really that competitive, which, by the way, I'm guessing that doesn't include benefits, like this, this analysis, and I know that the, the benefits, at least in terms of the health insurance, is typically better than the private sector. So I would guess that the biggest turnoff is, is just the caseload rather than the, than the pay. So, that's another reason why I thought, you know, it was important to, to bring in some temporary help while we, you know, right the ship and, and, and get these, get these positions filled, so that long-term, we can, we can provide the kids with the, with the services that they need. So, that being said, I hope, you know, administration here, I hope we can do a better job of selling this to our, you know, prospective SLPs here, sell the, you know, the, the compensation here, as well as the fact that we're gonna be seeing a decrease in caseload. So, anyway, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cortez, Ms. Pertle, and Ms. Aguirre. That will take us to item eight B, overview of district improvement. Oh, okay. Yeah, I take it back, Dr. Rosbello.
Yeah, so I guess what my confusion is, I, I thought you were gonna speak to Trustee Call's comment on the caseload. I really want to understand that a little bit more, on, we are paying our SLPs more than the neighboring districts, but the caseload is higher here than the neighboring districts. Do we have those numbers, or do we look at that?
I believe Ms. Reyes spoke to the caseloads earlier. She can come up again and speak to the caseloads.
Yeah, that's where.
So I guess my question would be, in terms of caseload, what is our goal? If we were to have a full staff of SLPs, what would that caseload be? And is that the caseload that we expect to have for our SLPs?
And before Ms. Reyes comes to speak to that item, I would just like to really just offer the opportunity to meet, I know there have been some meetings with the SLPs to go over their compensation and have a true understanding of what their new pay is for the, for the school year. And again, that's something that is important to, to really emphasize that they are a very key and valued employee, valued employees with the district, and bring true, really, special services to our, to our students. And so if this is something that we can do from the HR perspective, and have further meetings to really talk about what their compensation looks like, because it appears to me that maybe there's still not an understanding of the, the benefit that the 106 provided to them, and so I do offer that to the group as an additional meeting.
Yeah, so really, Ms. Reyes, what I want to know is that, is, let's just assume that we're able to fill the eight vacancies. Does that get us to an acceptable caseload ratio in terms of what's recommended, you know, by, you know, the association for SLPs, you know, just like with counselors? We know what the ratio is, right?
We would still probably be above ten to fifteen case, kids, you know, but then again, as we continue to increase, you know, SLPs that have a hundred or seventy-something, eighty-some cases, they are, they're, they're, we do have our SLPAs that could come in, maybe not a full-time SLPA, but maybe thirty percent of that time. Yes, ma'am.
So there is work for us to do to address caseload?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and the other districts are better with caseload than we are?
I can tell you, everybody right now is above. You know, when you look at a, and this is a recommendation, because there's really no set number, no formula that we go by, but when we look at task fee recommendations, it can be anywhere from forty-five to fifty without an assistant. Like I tell you, YISD is at sixty elementary, a hundred at the secondary, Socorro is seventy, you know, and a hundred, you know, with an SLP. Um, Socorro is seventy, you know, and a hundred, um, you know, with an SLP.
And, and I guess, um, one, one other thing. I know the one-oh-six to one-oh-seven has been a big one that we've been having discussions over the next month. And I'm wondering if that's something that we could take into this budget, budget cycle that's upcoming? Um, because I know that we can't address it at this point. Um, and I kinda wanted to turn to our legal counsel to kind of explain what the legal thing is there.
Yes, just briefly and try to make it simply put, um, anything that the district does or spends has to be budgeted. And so the board did pass a budget, which includes the compensation package. All of the things that are included in the compensation package have to be contemplated. That's why over the years, if you'll remember, even when we had Esra funds, if we were gonna grant a stipend, um, it had to be specifically worded in the motions and so that was contemplated at the time. Even if, uh, just to put it in very simple terms, like for a stipend, if the stipend was gonna be not until like the second part of the year, the second semester, if the, if the board were to find or the district were to find this extra pot of money, you had to have that specific, specifically mentioned in the motion. And so the reason for that is there's constitutional prohibitions. First, it's gotta be budgeted. But second of all, Article Three, Section Fifty-three has this provision that you can't give extra pay once you either have performed a services or a contract has begun. So unfortunately for this budget cycle, because of the, the board motion that was taken and, and the budget that was passed, and because the, these things were not contemplated, you've got constitutional prohibitions for doing this in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, but certainly you could do it in future years.
Um, so, yeah, no, sorry. One of the things I think that was most helpful, um, to me was something that was included in the board update, and I can't remember when, but it really detailed, um, exactly, uh, uh, more, there was a lot more specificity to what the pay increases actually look like. And I appreciate that, appreciate you all doing that work to put that together. It sounds like there's a disconnect maybe between what the understanding of that is on the other side. Um, and I'm not sure why. So, uh, sometimes I think it's hard when I, when things are clear as mud whenever they're in a board, in the board backup. And so whenever we have the midpoint, minimum, and maximum, if we could get a better breakdown of what that actually translates to, um, cause for all we know, every, everybody is moved over and put on a midpoint. I mean, we really, there's such a great, great variance between midpoint and max, maximum that without really knowing where everybody lands, it's hard to tell. Um, I will say that that board update provided that specificity, and that was very, very helpful. So, um, if we could just maybe have that down the line. The other thing that I think that I would love to see, um, is how the parents feel in this situation and maybe including an SLP climate survey to also have maybe, um, a survey from parents that experienced that, that utilized these services or whose children utilize these services, cause I think that would also paint a really great picture for us as we make decisions going forward. I think all of us are really looking forward to the moment when, um, we get to the other side of this and are able to really, you know, figure this out. And so I'm looking forward to those updates as we move along in the process.
And I'll just, and Ms. Cortez with, uh, I heard that you were willing to meet with the SLPs to kinda go over what it is, ensuring they have their contracts, go over the pay and things of that nature. So I appreciate that. And I, I, you know, if you guys have an opportunity to meet with Ms. Cortez, I think it'd be highly valuable to, to clarify some of these. I agree with Ms. Ms. Hernandez, I think the last time, uh, an issue was brought forward. I know that, that, uh, Mr. Moore was thanking Hernandez and I for, uh, stopping wage theft, as he put it. And what I took it as was just missing, you know, miscommunication between the two parties. Um, so if this is another opportunity to have that conversation, I think there's, there's high benefit. So thank you.
Absolutely.
And with that, I will excuse you guys the third time, this time this term.
Thank you.
And we'll go to item eight B, overview of district improvement plan and campus improvement plans, timeline and process. Ms. Saavedra.
Yes, President Iribali and trustees. Uh, the staff, uh, is prepared to just share the process that we're using um, to, um, create our performance objectives for our campus improvement plans and our district improvement plan. The actual performance objectives will be provided to you as a, as, as a board update between now and the October board meeting. In the October board meeting, we will bring those performance objectives for you all to approve, uh, going forward. Uh, but as I said, because it's extensive information for you to review, we'll provide it to you in advance between now and the, um, October board meeting. Ms. Macias, take it away.
Yes, President Iribali, Ms. Saavedra, members of the board. Um, we're here to share with you our district improvement plans and campus improvement plans. And again, this is just a precursor to next month where you'll actually approve our performance objectives. We're gonna go over planning, alignment, process, and timeline. Of course, our performance, performance objectives and our next steps. I'm trying to go quick, cause I know that you guys are ready. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my expert, Ms. Christine Ferret. Take it away.
Hello, Christine Ferret, Executive Director of Strategic Planning and Design. Uh, thank you, President Iribaldi, uh, board members, Ms. Saavedra. Uh, one thing I'm very excited with this new year. Uh, last year, we talked about having all of our pieces of planning and strategic planning aligned. And this year, we're presenting it to you, uh, and, and you will see a full alignment, starting with the mission, vision, core beliefs that the board approved last fall, and then developed the district's strategic blueprint. Uh, last spring, we shared the strategic investments aligned to the five levers. And this, uh, year, you will see the district improvement plan completely aligned to the five levers, department plans aligned to the five levers, and the campus improvement plans, all aligned. Uh, just as a reminder, the role of the board and what we'll bring to you next month is for the board to approve the campus performance objectives and the district performance objectives to ensure they're mutually supportive and that they meet chapter, uh, the Education Code, Chapter Four. So this next slide shares a little bit about the process all the way from, uh, fall through summer for the district improvement plan and the different components. And at the bottom are some specific planning dates where we looked at everything from the needs assessment, the budget priorities, department plans, performance objectives, and then the strategies and how that evaluation and Title I requirements fit into the plan. On the campus improvement plan, you'll see a similar cycle with the comprehensive needs assessment, their budget priorities, performance objectives, and strategies. For the district improvement plan, our key, uh, group that works through, uh, the, the, uh, the final plan is our DIAC, and at our campuses is our campus improvement teams. I wanna share just a few, uh, pieces to the comprehensive needs assessment. Uh, TEA provides, uh, a recommendation of eight areas or a, a sample template for eight areas to really look at all of the needs uh, for, uh, campuses and districts. These are the, the components that really exemplify what we do in education. Uh, they also have other templates that can be used, and they, they can be modified. So in order to really ensure the alignment, this year, we really looked at the data that combined the state eight areas and our five levers. So you can see a little bit of how that alignment was, uh, set up. And then for each of the levers, there's specific data pieces that you'll see in the strategic plan that we looked at, where are we at now, what are our strengths, what are our needs, so that we could really, uh, summarize and use that as our planning process for our plan. And so here's just an example of a few of the areas and the template that the campuses and the district used, uh, for the needs assessment. Again, our district improvement plan and campus improvement plans throughout the district have the same five goals, and those are the strategic levers. Uh, when we look at our alignment this year, the mission, vision, and core beliefs of the strategic blueprint are, are in our district improvement plan, exactly the same. The five levers are the five goals. And the essential actions and key targets of the three-year strategic plan have been rewarded into, uh, performance object, measurable performance objectives in the one-year plan, that's our district improvement plan. Uh, department plans each, uh, coordinated a section of the district strategic plan and have worked through, uh, strategies to help make that a reality. And those are the essential strategies of our district improvement plan. So this just shares a little preview of what we intend to bring, uh, next month, based on levers. You can see for the whole child development, there are nine, uh, recommended, uh, performance objectives. And on the right-hand side, if it says yes on CIP, those will also be in the campus improvement plans. For academic excellence, we are currently looking at thirteen performance objectives. And then you can see at the right which, uh, campus improvement plans at which level will also have those. For destination district, uh, we're looking at seven. For culture of accountability, we have eight. And for equity by design, uh, seven. And so, uh, as we work through and finalize data, in some cases, some of that data is still coming in with the, uh, final accountability pieces. Um, and our campuses are working through their final pieces of their plan, we should be ready to bring to you, uh, the performance objectives and the plans at both the campus and district level in the next few weeks. Uh, this just shares a quick sample of how the plan was really, uh, divvied out or coordinated between the different cabinet members and the different departments in the district. Each department has some of their current data reality identified from their needs assessment and our baseline data, and then a focus target, uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. And they identified the strategies and aligned with their, uh, strategic investments. And then those were inputted into the first draft of our plan that was then taken to our stakeholders in DIAC. Our next steps is really just to complete those pieces with our final accountability data um, and bring it to the Board of Trustees in October. This time, do you have any clarifying questions or, uh, feedback?
Trustee Hernandez.
I just wanted to know, so therefore each campus will be filling this out for us? And then you're gonna compile it for us?
So each campus has a campus improvement team. We did a full day of training with the teams in summer where we worked through the needs assessment and helped them access the data, identify their needs. We, um, gave them the sentence stems for the goals and the performance objectives. And so they adjusted it to their campus baseline and, uh, a, a target that fit their need and where they're at. And, uh, and then they worked with their campus teams further to develop the strategies to help them accomplish those performance objectives. So Plan for Learning is our district software, and the campus teams input all of it in, Plan for Learning. We have a district coordinator who's reviewing, currently reviewing all of our campus plans and, and ensuring all of the components of alignment, but also there's, um, additional components that are part of compliance are complete and in there and providing some additional support where it's needed so we can get to that final piece.
Thank you.
And, and when are we getting the, the plan?
The, yeah.
Right before the board meeting?
Three weeks before, I think we will have it, we'll be ready to go.
And we'll do that on the cloud, right? We're not gonna do the ancient USB like we do every year?
I have it available for the cloud.
Okay.
But I have to make sure that Ms. Carrasco approves that.
Like a board update would be great.
I think we've become a little more sophisticated.
Cause I was like, here's the USB, I don't even have anything to put the USB in anymore.
Any other questions? Nope, okay, so thank you, Ms. Ferret and Ms. Macias. That will take us to item eight C, the accountability update. And I believe that we have a speaker?
One speaker.
Ms. Hernandez?
Ross Moore.
Board President Iribaldi, board members, Ms. Saavedra, my name is Ross Moore, President, El Paso AFT. Gone through this in detail. When it was put together, it's excellent. It is a very good pre-planning document. It's well documented with real numbers, not conveniently cherry-picked because the data in here comes from TEA. This you can believe. It's good. It's a good basis for planning. Probably is going to need to do it right, a little bit more flexibility in classrooms and on campuses. But this is a good pla, planning product. And I did planning for over twenty years in the Army, so I know a little bit about it. But what I also know as a planner, no plan survives first contact with the enemy. And I hate to say it, the enemy's TEA. I sent you all, and I've shared with you, the STAR alternate-two participation requirements. If you haven't read these, particularly if you have a special needs student or family members in the district or any school in Texas, you need to read and look through this carefully. Basically, a student, as I shared in the example, who is blind, has an IQ of forties, mid-forties, barely communicates, under these criterias from Commissioner Morath, will have to take the regular, not the STAR alt, STAR alt-two test. It is designed to make, the effect is, everything that Ms. Macias has done, that you guys have put together, it's now at jeopardy because this is going to blow up your A through F ratings. This is not district's fault, this is being done to every district in the state. And bluntly, AFT is getting ready to gear up to go to war over this. And today, and I think I shared with you, here's round two for second contact from TEA, delaying. Delay in, uh, twenty-twenty-three AF ac, uh, academic accountability ratings. I guess I didn't say what the commissioner wanted to. This is gonna make your, this is going to reboot, reboot everything you've got in here. This is not your fault. This is a commissioner trying to make schools fail. Trying to make you fail and you all fail. Nothing more, nothing less. And his use of special needs students is the sickest thing I've seen come out of Austin. He's using them to cause districts to fail by denying him, denying them what they need and what the ARD committees say they need.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, your time's up.
And that is my angry voice, guys, if you haven't heard it before.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Saavedra?
Yes, thank you, President Iribaldi, trustees. Um, Ms. Maribel Macias and her team, um, along with, um, Dr. Jaclyn Kennedy and Dr. Carla Gonzalez, uh, will be sharing information with you. Um, when we prepared this presentation, uh, as Mr. Moore indicated, um, we did have what-if data, and we were anticipating, um, our final ratings coming out in September, um, September twenty-eighth, to be exact. Um, as of this morning, TEA released information posted to their website, and the Austin American Statesman reported that the commissioner intends to delay, uh, the release of final, uh, rules, if you will, for accountability, uh, for at least another month. Um, so we're looking at not receiving our final ratings or final data until October, possibly November. Um, and so I would, um, although we're absolutely ready to share data uh, based on where we thought we were and where the state was going, um, at this point, um, as you know, it, we're still waiting. And, and I, I think the what-if is still out there. Um, so we'll share the information that we know now. I think what's the most important is for us to really think about, um, the fact that we have a strong response plan um, to meet the needs of our students. Um, and, you know, although we understand that A through F is a reality for us um, in the state of Texas, um, A through F is not, um, the end-all, be-all. Um, you know, our, our kids deserve much more, and our instructional plan includes much more than us meeting the standards for A through F. Um, so at this time, I, I will hand it over to Ms. Macias so she can share, uh, some information with you about, um, the information as we know it, uh, prior to the news coming out, um, this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Saavedra, President Iribaldi, Ms. Saavedra, members of the board. Um, accountability update is in transition, as you all have heard. The one thing that we know is our students are amazing, and each one is different. And it's important that we know well and how they're doing so that we could continue to help them. So with that, let me share with you some of our projected information. I do have an amazing team there, they are the brains and the minds. They're, they're late nights, trying to calculate something that we don't have rules for. They'll release things sometimes, two, three times during the week, and then they don't release anything else. So I'll just do that preface that this amazing team has done a brilliant effort to try to give us the data so that we could continue to support each and every child. And with that, let me share with you kind of what it looks like. So the biggest idea behind this is we know that, and we started sharing this with you, that we have a refresh, not just on the A through F system, but also a reboot in how our testing looks like. So had shared that with you all before. This is something that is the same. We know that domain one and domain two scores, we get the best of two. That's seventy percent of how we calculate. And then we have domain three, which is closing the gaps, that's thirty percent, and that gives us our overall grade. That hasn't changed, however, all of the other components within that calculation are still up in the air. And as of today, as you noticed, they paused a little bit. And I'll share with you a little bit of why, a little bit later on, which is a good thing. Again, I think sometimes when we have to pivot, TA has realized that they have to slow down a little bit to ensure that they do what's right for our districts and for our students. So with that, biggest thing that I want to walk away with or for you all to walk away with is that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Whenever you reboot a system, you usually have a baseline. So that is the biggest thing that many districts have been sharing with TA is that as you're rebooting the system, you have to do a baseline year so then we could grow from there. This year, they were adjusting the system without giving the baseline and then already holding us accountable for, and we know it's students that have already graduated. So those are things that are very important as we move forward. These are some of the changes that are in the books. They might hopefully adjust them, but right now, these are the things that we've shared with you in the past. For example, third through eighth star, it used to be all multiple choice now, and this is a good thing. Twenty-five percent of it is where you're actually doing open-ended responses. They have items to write on. Those are good things for our students because that's what they do on a daily basis. However, those things are being adjusted midstream and not allowing us that baseline year. The other thing is that they're adjusting the scale score. So they're adjusting the grading scales. Before, certain number of tests, if you got them correct, equaled to a ninety or a seventy or a sixty. Now they're adjusting that. Same number of questions gotten that are correct might be adjusted and now the grading scale has shifted. So that's one thing that that they're adjusting and why they're pausing. They realized that whenever they started doing the percentage growth, they started comparing it, and this is something that I just read today. In twenty-nineteenth, this growth score was the highest for only nineteen percent of the districts. That was in twenty-nineteen, pre-pandemic. In twenty-twenty-two, after our pandemic, fifty-one percent of our districts used growth as the highest scores. So what TA was doing is they were basing their calculations and adjusting their scales to that twenty-twenty-two growth. So they realized, and I'm going to read you a quote from Commissioner Morath. It says, "Once we saw the average rate of growth looked much closer to twenty-nineteen, meaning this year's growth looks much closer to twenty-nineteen, it was then that we realized that the baseline targets that incorporated twenty-twenty-two would be inappropriate. You should not build goals off of the anomalous performance." So therefore, that's the pause that we're going through now. And again, hopefully, they'll start looking at some of the information. So team, we're back to the drawing board whenever they come up with some rules, some other late nights. So with that, again, not apples-to-apples, that's so important for us to know. And the biggest part of it is, this is a good visual for me, I'm a visual person. If you notice, usually when you compare growth, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, if you notice, the number of test questions are pretty close. The cut scores are very close, so therefore, we knew exactly what was, did not meets, approaches, meets and masters. From twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three, again, a large number set of tests and those cut scores were also adjusted. And not just that, the cut scores changed, not just from the English test to the Spanish. So those are also anomalies that are in the books that, again, they're changing all the rules for us. That doesn't mean that we're giving excuses. Again, we are going to do what's right for students. We just want to make sure that everybody knows that the game has changed as far as the rules. So just giving you a little bit of update. So this one here is an example that TA set out. I really think, I'm not going to even go over it because I think this one's going to change, yay. And again, won't go over this one because they realized, this is a slide that they shared earlier, is that with the adjustments, again, really focusing on that twenty-twenty-two growth or twenty-twenty-two growth, they realized that, I think it was sixty, let's see, twenty-eight percent of the ratings decreased even though they stayed the same. So they did their what-if analysis and they realized that it was going to be a big shift to our districts. And with that, we ran some what-ifs, you all, Ms. Ayveda, thank you for sharing that. With the calculations that the team created, again, using this year's data, because it was released in raw form, using this year's projected numbers, because they hadn't really released all of the formulas, we were looking at possibly transitioning from a high B to a seventy-nine, a high C. So with that, hopefully, that will change. These are just some of the highlights that I previously went through. The other thing that the team did, and thank you, is they used this year's raw data and they actually calculated and inputted into last year's rules. So this year, the way that our students performed, they used last year's calculations. And if you notice, now this is a true apples-to-apples. If we have this year's scores using last year's calculations, our end result would have been that high B that we had. The reason that we, actually, it would have been a ninety-two. However, the fact that we have campuses within our district that achieved that domain score, which was a D or a not rated, that's why we were capped at an eighty-nine. So again, all else equal, this year's data sets with last year's formulas, we would, we would have been at par. Again, we want to always be increasing, but again, that way you all could see the true apples-to-apples. And with that, you all have seen this, is that even though we increased in our overall, and this one here is our CCMR from a seventy-eight to a seventy-nine, last year we were in A and this year with a new CCMR cut scores, which I don't know if they're going to change or not, we would be classified as a B even though we increased in performance. Historical results, as you see, for the past six years, and of course, it doesn't include our COVID year, we have been consistently flat. The reason that we say that is that we have some things that our doctors are going to come up and share with you of what we're doing to adjust our current systems that we have. Again, our viable curriculum, the supports that we're doing at the campus levels and truly focusing on those areas of needs. And one thing that I know for our board, you truly focus on our meets and masters level and those the areas that we are focusing on. So on that top number, usually across the state, you'll see that thirty, seventy, forty-one and sixteen. But for EPISD, we focus on the meets and on the masters. So if you look at the little number on top, so for example, we have twenty-four percent of our students hit that meets level from third through eighth. We had sixteen percent that hit that masters level. The reason that that is important is because oftentimes, there's a misunderstanding that an EPISD that approaches is the one that we have the most students. We do, we have twenty-nine percent, but the gap is little. And truly, our goal is to ensure that the meets and the masters, those percentages increase. That way, we are, at that seventy percent, could truly be more on the meets and the masters level. So I thought that that was important for our board to see because that's something that we focus on. And that's the same concept here with our EOC. And if you notice on our EOC, in that area, EOC is of course for our eighth graders taking end, and of course, ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth. We do have more students in the meets level, thirty-four percent of our students, twenty-seven percent only do the approaches and sixteen percent do the masters. So we're going to continue to focus again on the meets and masters for us, just wanted to break that down. And with this, looking at third through eighth grade, of course, in all of our subject areas for reading, we are above the state in third, fourth and fifth. We are above the state in the region in third, fourth and fifth. And those are the other areas, again, we don't just focus on the highlights, we also focus on the areas that we have to grow. The other thing is mathematics. If you notice, that's an area that we're truly focusing on and you're going to hear the team on some of the approaches for that, especially in that sixth grade. The other thing that we always look at is our EB students, our emergent bilingual and non-emergent bilingual, because we want to make sure that we're closing the gaps. So looking at the data set is so important so that we don't forget what is truly important for us. And I know that there has been conversations with our dual language, what are we doing to support our EB students? This is the data that we focus on, not just overall, but student by student to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our stakeholders. And with that, just a quick little slide, even though we increased in these domains before this refresh, hopefully, this new button that just happened, that would have been our projected. But we have faith that we're going to continue to focus on growth. As you mentioned, that is an area, and that's what we want to do. Every child should have the opportunity to grow. They come in and one year of input, I've heard you say this, Ms. Ayveda, should equal one year of output. So if we do this right, this is how they calculate our domain. If we do this right, if we focus on growth in the elementary and middle school level, that would be eighty-five percent of our final grade if we truly do that well. Same thing for high schools, that would be seventy percent. So with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Dr. Kennedy. This was old and now we know that there's a little pause. Unfortunately, that means that some of the data sets that we're going to bring to you in September and October, might be October and November. Well, we'll continue to provide you updates through the board packet and we'll continue to crunch numbers so that we could see, you all could see where we are throughout this journey. So with that, Dr. Kennedy?
Good evening. We wanted to, we knew this was just an update for you and that we presented at the end of June. With that what-if data, we provided a much more comprehensive academic support plan. But we did know that with seeing this data again, we wanted to come back and emphasize a few things. One in particular, that these are kind of the three areas that we're really kind of framing our work around. One, that transformational culture, really looking at having a cycle of continuous improvement so that not only as our programs grow and advance and we strengthen those, but we're also doing that with our instruction. The other piece of that being that component around curriculum. I know that's been a big piece of the work that we've laid that foundation for last year and then coming into this year. And a lot of what Ms. Macias talked about is really the focus that we're trying to stay with, is providing all students with on-grade level content and being able to ensure that all students have access to high-quality materials. The other piece of that is just continuing to support effective instruction in the classroom and being able to meet those, those standards. And so we're really kind of had some different areas that we started to look at. So these are kind of interdependent structures because a lot of what we've been walking through is, if that's our main goal around those particular areas, what are the structures that we need to have in place that really are designed and implement to foster those three things occurring? One is planning for initial instruction and being able to provide supports for teachers, to be able to collaboratively plan and have a focus on the days ahead, looking at our units and then providing that, those pieces that are connected to our curriculum. Professional learning and support, which is huge right now, there's a lot of learning and people are engaged in the system around a lot of new pieces. And so now it really is connecting that to those instructional supports. Observation, feedback and support and how we provide that support for our campus teaching coaches. And now with the onboarding of our interventionists who are working with students who are going to be providing feedback and support to students. And then assessment of mastery. So we have really started to look at our universal screener, which you know is NWA MAP. We have our first BOY, we're right at the end of that. And that'll be able to help us really look at where our students are now and be able to track them on that trajectory from kindergarten all the way through high school to see how our students are growing and being able to align that to the curriculum as well. And then intervention and enrichment. It's been a big conversation about how we provide supports to move our students beyond approaching, but also that we're ensuring that students are walking away with the skills that they need to continue to grow. So whether that is wind time, whether that's intercession, whether that's summer school, whether that is in-class, small group instruction, all of those things encompass intervention and enrichment supports. And so those are kind of our big key pieces that we are working through. So as it relates to instructional support, we have kind of two things that we've been prioritizing. One, ensuring that there is scheduled just-in-time learning. We had opportunities to meet with the teacher advisory council, which was really nice because we could share with them as you are learning, as you have identified needs, they'll be learning that you can access at your fingertips to learn in the areas that where you want to grow. Access to content conversations. We also have put together opportunities for teachers to be able to look at videos, to plan out their sessions so that they can kind of have something captured virtually, but also where they can have conversations with their colleagues and peers to really get peer conversations, not just with a facilitator who's in our teaching and learning division, but also be able to have conversations with one another, other teachers who teach fourth grade or other teachers that teach third grade and so forth. We have a year-long learning continuum that we've developed for both principals, coaches and teams of teachers to really begin to build capacity across the organization. Dr. Gonzalez is going to share a little bit more about how we approach that because we did develop that aligned to a tiered level of support so that our campuses that have the greatest needs are the campuses that are getting that additional support. We also have support for intervention teams. So that's also including instructional climate, behavior supports so that as they're working with their new MTS support teams, there's a group and a team of people who are coming together to provide ongoing supports to students based on different needs, not just academic, but also SEL, behavior. So they're kind of pulling those pieces together, which is why we transitioned to that MTS model. For tools, we just incorporated a few things that we wanted to be able to provide. One being support where they can access the curriculum. So we kind of redesigned our Schoology site to provide a much more structured approach for curriculum resources. We also were able to start to put together some, some data analysis protocols so that as we're looking at where students' needs are from their universal screening data as well as what we're finding from STAR data, that we start to narrow down where the focus is and what the skills are that students are having that are deficits and where the supports are going to be provided. So that's where that line of support comes from the math and the reading interventionist in addition to the classroom teacher. And then what we shared back in June were just specific supports that were going to be provided for our dual-language students, our special education students as well as ESL. So being able to provide teachers with instructional approaches, but those pieces are also, especially for dual-language and ESL, embedded in the actual curriculum documents. And then guidance throughout the year as we continue to monitor and support the connection between the instructional minutes, what's happening with wind time and being able to look at the master schedules overall. So we said that would be something we continue to do as the year goes by. So I want to turn it over to Dr. Gonzalez who'll share a little bit about the tiered campuses that we aligned our support to.
As Dr. Kennedy has mentioned, we've worked very, very closely together because the supports that we're going to provide through school leadership are hand-in-hand with what academics has developed and what they'll continue to support as we roll out the curriculum and we use our new highly qualified instructional materials. What you have in front of you, and I'm sorry, hopefully, it's a way that you can blow it up a little bit on your own screens. High schools are easy to see, but as we get to the elementaries, you're going to see it gets very, very tiny. In a tiered approach, we have three tiered levels. There's tier one, two and three. And our tier three campuses are the ones that are going to receive the most intensive support. They're the ones that based on domain one graduation rate when it comes to the high school, the CCMR, college career military readiness. And then we also wanted to put some other indicators just to help us sort of differentiate a little bit on the amount of supports. And then we also wanted to put some other indicators just to help us sort of differentiate a little bit on the amount of supports. Principal experience. Of our seventy-six campuses, twenty-four of our principals are brand-new or in their first full year of their principalship. And so we did want to take that into account, even though they may be a brand-new principal and a high-performing campus, they're still a brand-new principal and will need to have a certain level of support from school leadership and academics. We also looked at past performance. And then you're going to see on the very end of the slide, it just tells you based on their tier, tier one, two, or three, how often we will be dedicating visits to them and not a drive-by visit. We have completely restructured our time in school leadership to enable our assistant supes and our executive principals who are principal supervisors to be on campuses full two days of the week minimum. And these are to actually spend time side-by-side not only with the principal, their instructional leadership team, being in PLCs, walking the campus in conjunction with academics and just across the district from central office, specialty specialists in various areas that are designed to support that campus and that instructional leadership team. When we did receive the data, some tentative data today, and compared it to how we had tiered, here we have the high schools, they did pretty much fall somewhat along these lines. So we are already providing this support for the principals. We've already implemented this tiering. Principals are aware and they're appreciative of the support. Usually what we hear from our tier-one is they want to see us more, even though you might think they'd like us to leave them alone. They don't. They love to have that side partner, that someone to talk to, someone to just shadow with them, and someone to help guide and coach them. Here are middle and pre-K aid schools. Again, we're basing it on Domain One. Why this is so important to us? We know this is the first teach. And this is really what our curriculum and the highly-qualified instructional materials were designed and brought in to help support. It is what are we doing in our classrooms every day with every student? And if we're doing things well, eighty percent of our students should be able to master, gain that material, and move on the first time the lesson's provided. And we know historically that hasn't been the case, so we are going to focus on Domain One. Even though we're looking at closing gaps and progress, that's critical to us. Here with our middle areas, principal experience, past performance, still very important. But then the frequency of the visits, whether it's every week, twice a month, or monthly, they will be seeing their supervisor, a team from academic school leadership, or a combination of all of us. And then our last group is our elementaries, our largest groups of all. And you can see, again, we have the tiers. We're looking at Domain One, Domain Two, is there indicated for you? And again, a lot of new principals. And so that's a huge, huge lift in terms of just making sure that they understand the job and all of that. It's good to tell that they have the support, not only from school leadership, but from academics, as well as one of the proposals that we have brought forward, and your support tonight is very much appreciated, is a mentoring program that we will be providing to our new principals, not only just from school leadership, but with from our master principals that we do have within our district that will continue to support their peers and their colleagues as they're onboarding them. I know I'm the last speaker on the last item of the agenda of a long day. So I do want to open it up for questions. I know I went really fast. A lot of really powerful information was shared. But is there anything that I can go a little bit deeper on for you or Ms. Macias or Dr. Kennedy as well?
No, I just wanted to make a comment. That's a very good overview, and I really appreciate you all putting it together in very simple and understanding terms. Thank you.
Trustee Anani?
So I guess my biggest question is more related to resource allocation as we have at whatever point we have an equity audit. Because I think it's clear, again, from the data that we're seeing sort of the same geographical areas consistently being impacted. You see basically all of the tier-three schools at the elementary level become all of the tier-three schools at the middle school level, become all of the tier-three, you know, schools at the high school level, and so you can almost draw this on a map. My question is more related to what are we doing to prepare for what resources might be required as we're conducting our root cause analysis of how we can address some of those deficiencies with our systematic, you know, programming?
I would say that I'll start, and then I think that one of the things that's going to be important for us to look at, as we've seen, you know, when we look at STAR data, that's really looking in the rearview mirror. And so one of the things that really helps us launch instructional programming and helps us differentiate for students is going to be our universal screener. And so our beginning-of-the-year data, when we bring it back to you all in October, is going to be critical and important because at that time, we can really show you where are we in terms of literacy? What does that look like at kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, and then, you know, across the district? And then by campus, and then teachers can drill down to classroom levels with that. That gives us a huge indicator about additional literacy supports that we may need to add to what already, what we already started with. So it may be that we would have to go back to our entitlement funds and look at, does a campus need an additional literacy specialist? Because the numbers are showing that there are significant numbers of students who are not reading anywhere close to grade level at the beginning of the year. And then at the middle of the year, same thing for numeracy. And so I think that that universal screener, you know, even before we get any equity audit data, will give us a window or, you know, into what additional supports we might need to provide for any individual campus aside from what we've already allocated in terms of resources. And I do believe that our assessment framework is very, very specific. So it's not only about providing response and systemic instructional supports. It's also about progress monitoring. So we're looking at, you know, universal screener data. We're looking at assessment data with specific reasons and data protocols in terms of like, what is this data telling us? And then using that information to really, you know, I would say specify our response. So that data is going to be critical and important in terms of allocating resources that are above and beyond what we've already launched for all of our campuses to start the school year.
And just sort of as a point of clarification, and I appreciate the response, and I'm wondering, just because we kind of started talking about this as we were going through the budget cycle, that are we relying on entitlements exclusively? Because one of the things that kind of was brought up as we were, you know, dealing with this in the budget cycle was that our entitlements were sort of systemically appropriated. Are we going to revisit that, or are we going to try and allocate funding from a different funding source in order to, as you mentioned, based on the data, apply resources where they're needed most?
I would say that we would look at, I'm not sure that we would take away unless there was an absolute reason why there was not a need. But what I would share is that we would look at entitlement funding and see what could we add on using entitlement funding? I think that we also look at compensatory education funds, and that's another additional source that we can look at. And then, you know, we may have to go back to 199 budget and say, okay, here's where we've got some additional funds that we may need to reallocate to add additional staffing. You know, so those are things that we're always looking at and adjusting. I think the difference here is that we're going to be doing that using, you know, data from our diagnostic and universal screener along with additional progress monitoring assessment measures.
And I guess that my request would be then, as we go into the next budget cycle, can we include this tiered, these tiered support systems as we're having those conversations? Just so that we know that we are targeting, it's targeted resourcing, really?
And I know what you're getting at. I know that one of the things that I've shared with the board is that year one, a big push for us in terms of the first phase of our response was really to align the system. Set expectations, align the system, because we need a standard to hold people accountable to. And so that's phase one. And as we begin to look at the data and see how it's shaking out, then now that the system's aligned, we can begin to differentiate in the ways that we need to based on resource allocation and really look out long-term for the next budget cycle. So we appreciate that feedback.
Trustee call.
Can you pull up number twenty-four, or excuse me, twenty of the presentation?
What does that look like?
Yeah, sorry, slide twenty.
What is, what was the?
Percentage of students with meets are higher by grade, or by subject in grade. Next one. Next one.
It's the one that shows the state and regional average. It's percent of students with, by subject in grade, meets are higher. It's slide number twenty.
Ours aren't numbered. I'm sorry that way here. We don't have any numbers on these slides.
It is right after the twenty-twenty-three EOC district summary by subject. It's the slide right after that. It's farther down. Keep going. Keep going. You're close. Right there. That one.
We're fixing to hop over to look.
So I'm not an educator. You know, we all know that. I see a couple of trends here. To me, this is the most important slide of all of them by far. Because, you know, we can argue and split hairs about the way, you know, we're the way that the accountability measures perform and what the commissioner is doing or isn't doing. But to me, this is where the rubber meets the road because in the real world, our kids that we're producing are constantly being compared against their peers, not against some arbitrary standard of, you know, some score that some educator cooked up somewhere. Anyway, they're being compared against their peers is my point. To me, this says so much. And here's the trend that I see. I see that when we're starting off in, say, let's just take grade three, third grade, we're not that far. If we look at reading and math, we're not that far off from Region Nineteen or the state. But fast forward to eighth grade, we're significantly behind. The first step in always, you know, changing and addressing something is admitting that there's a problem. There's a problem here. I'm horrified by this. I know we're doing a lot of things great. I'm not denigrating anybody in this room. But this worries me a lot. So what? In the professional opinions of everybody in this room, what is causing this? Why are we, why are we in line with Region Nineteen and the state in the lower grades? And why are we, why are we so far behind in the later grades?
Well, I would share that something that I've shared with the board on a regular basis, and I think this was part of the conversation when we were talking about elementary and really adjusting master schedules at the elementary level. I think that what happens quite a bit, and the focus of the system in the past, has been to prepare kids to be successful on a state assessment. And so what you see is that at the elementary level, if we're focused on preparing kids for a test, you've got a lot of test prep strategies. You've got after-school tutorials. You've got Saturday camps that happen. But that doesn't truly address or build the skill level of a student year over year so that by the time that they're faced with higher levels of expectations at the middle school, you see that, you know, you see a significant gap at the middle school level. That's one cause that we've, that, you know, because we were not, we did not have any, I would say, fidelity to instructional minutes. There was, you know, for any given elementary school, you might have ten different ways that they were dividing instructional time for the four content areas. And so when I tell you that phase one has been to align the system, to roll out a curriculum, align a system, set expectations, have progress monitoring measures in place, those might sound like very broad overarching strategies, but they're critical and important to building a system of excellence. And that's what we've not done well in the past. And it has to start at the elementary level. The other conversations we've had are, our education doesn't start in third grade when we start measuring A through F. We've got to put some of our strongest teachers in pre-K, Kinder, first, and second. And we've got to be monitoring, using our universal screener, how many kids are leaving those early grades, reading on grade level? And who's monitoring that data? We've not had a system to monitor that. We start looking at data in third grade in the past. That's not what we're looking at going forward. Because the minute the students enter our school system in pre-K, we should be using circle data to determine where they are with literacy and numeracy. In Kinder, first, and second grade, we should be looking at MAPS data. And third, you know, all the way through, we're looking at MAPS data. But it's critical in those early years because we can diagnose and intervene early to make sure that kids are reading on grade level and that their numeracy development is on target before they get to third grade. But our systems have been geared to third grade and beyond. And so it's critical and important when I share with you the systematic moves and strategies that we're making, you know, associated with instruction are important here. And we should begin to see an upward trajectory. I've shared with the board that that won't happen overnight. It's going to take time. You know, you heard Dr. Kennedy share with you, you, that this rollout of the curriculum, while, you know, teachers are digging in and using it, and I'm very proud of our teachers for, you know, really working hard, it's different. And they're in learning mode, and, you know, our charge is really to support them and lead them through that struggle. But so we're not going to see the improvements, you know, turn on a dime. But we're moving in the right direction so we can address the trend that you just noted on that particular slide.
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work to, you know, to fix this problem because it and everybody in this room. Thank you. It's a problem, and I have confidence that it's going to get better. It's going to get better. One last question on the social studies part. Any thoughts on that?
Yes. So I think when we came and we started that academic conversation at the end of June, one of the things that we did talk about is why, as a part of those instructional minutes, we wanted to reinforce social studies and science. Because a lot of the learning that happens there helps to develop background knowledge, academic vocabulary. And those are the things that students need to be able to acquire the reading skills that we're talking about. And so that, those are kind of part of the foundational pieces that we historically have been missing. And so you can see where that starts to present itself at eighth grade and then when we get to US history. And so I think that was one of the things that we came back to when we started having that instructional minutes conversation that connected to the master schedule is that it is one of the structures that needs to be in place because that's where everything everything lives off the master schedule. And so I think being able to have that in place also allowed us to, in partnership or in alignment with the curriculum development, be able to have instructional materials. So one, there's a curriculum for social studies now that is from kindergarten all the way So one, there's a curriculum for social studies now, that is from kindergarten all the way through U.S. history at this point. And then adding those materials for elementary, middle, and for that U.S. history. So being able to add the curriculum component so that that provides the framework of what students need to know and be able to do, but also providing those instructional approaches, helping teachers think about the actual content itself. But doing that from our early ages or our early grades all the way through, we think is also going to be a part of the contributing factor that we didn't have in place before.
And I support those efforts. I, at the end of last year, I was having a conversation with my daughter who brought home her social studies textbook after, after the year. And me being me, I was flipping through it and I was asking her questions about it. And she's a very bright girl, but she was telling me that, that they didn't spend any time on that in fifth grade. And I'm not sure exactly what happened there, but I sense that your diagnosis of the problem is correct, that the instructional, instructional minutes just aren't happening. And whatever we got, whatever we need to do and whatever I can do as a board member to make sure that that, you know, that I give you guys what you need to make sure that that happens. Please, you know, let me know. Like, this, this is important.
Thank you. I think we're on the right track.
Trustee Hernandez?
Trustee call, if it's any consolation, when we were on the committee, meaning trustee and Annie and I were on the, what was the name of our committee?
It was the, yeah, the House Bill Student Outcomes Committee.
All these items were, particularly in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They were identified back then and they had a solution or they knew how to combat this. And I really trust your team, your team, Ms. Ayvedra, in making it happen for us. Because we knew, in order for us to be competitive for our kids, yes, we knew at what stages they should be at, at a certain time. And I was reassured that Dr. Kennedy and Ms. Macias and Dr. Gonzalez knew how to, how to combat that. And with that, I think that we're in good hands, knowing that the team that Ms. Ayvedra has built to make this happen along with all the other team members, I'm going to push us through this, especially in those grades, sixth and seventh and eighth. And when they get into ninth grade, we already knew or we won't let them fall into the gaps that we were hoping to, to overcome at that time.
Any other trustees with any more questions? Trustee Hernandez?
Two quick, hopefully, questions. One question that I had is just based on our math, what we see with math. Do we have plans in place or could you talk a little bit about where we are with accelerated math instruction leading to eighth grade Algebra I? Just so I can kind of understand how that correlates with what I'm seeing on the screen.
So we current, so we currently have students that are taking Algebra I at eighth grade. I think what we talked about is being able to start moving in the direction as we start to redesign some of our aspects from GT to honors and into our pre-AP. That we wanted to be able to start having conversations about whether we were going to do the opt-in or the opt-out and to start to phase that in. So that is actually what we're planning for this year. So that when we have the onset of the new year, that will be something that we'll be reinforcing.
Could we get in the near future, a comprehensive update on what that looks like? And I mean, this is a place where we see that we're really, really far behind the region nineteen average. I know that there are other districts that double block in math, for example. Could we just get a better comprehensive look at why we're so behind the region?
And we do, and we can share that. We do have campuses that are double blocking. I think especially when we think about middle school, if you double block reading and you double block math, it also cuts out opportunities for electives. And so we're trying to balance that with what, with an academic goal, but also be able to ensure that students have other opportunities to be able to access things outside of academics. So that is happening, but I do, we can come back with a more comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and just to see what's happening at every campus. I think it, just so the board can kind of, you know, look at, you know, if the goal is Algebra I in eighth grade, what are we doing now to lead up to that? And then the last, the last question I have is, our EL, English learner scores are also really, really far behind. Where are English learners to non-English learners, we're like forty, sixty, is that about right?
Yes.
I think that's another place where I think the community may not understand how many English learners that we serve. And it would be also helpful to have a more comprehensive look, even at the community level. Because I think that really does impact our programming and where, how we're performing as a district. So I don't know what that looks like, but I think forty percent of English learners and us servicing forty percent is a really big number and it would be great to.
And a big, it's about?
I think it's what, thirty-seven percent?
Right. And it's, and a part of that is ESL. And then the other part of it is, is the, that emergent bilingual. So it's that number together. But I do think what we have in place similarly is, one of the things that we did identify in our process is that our ELs for that emergent bilingual group were not getting strong access to content. And so we were, we had more of a strategy-based approach. And I think that now what we've done is be able to kindergarten through eighth grade, be able to be, or to fifth grade rather, to be able to provide the same level of high-quality instructional materials in both English and Spanish. And that was not something we had prior to this year. And so I think that's going to be a support that is going to impact those math numbers as well as the reading numbers. But I think also being able to provide teachers with instructional approaches so that we can start to have those, those students learning in the classroom, but that we have those scaffolds and supports that are necessary as well and that teachers can access those with ease.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will. So item nine, items on the next month's agenda. We have Mr. Rossmore. Yes, sir. So that brings us to the overview of future board meeting agenda items, Ms. Ayvedra.
Which is very quick. We will be coming back to you with Campus Improvement Plan Performance Objectives and District Improvement Plan Performance Objectives in October. We will also host a special meeting for my summative evaluation in October. We'll also have bond construction and quarterly reports as part of our October meeting. And so that's really an update. We will also come back to you with House Bill three updates in October. And that will include some information on our MAPS data that we expect to have at that time. So.
Thank you. So that brings us to item number ten, adjournment, and it is eight twenty-seven. And with that, I'll close out the meeting. Thank you, staff and trustees, for all your hard work and time today.